We'll be going through a series of PowerPoint slides here on out with.
I guess it's page 12. I have a left side view.
The numbers that you're looking at on the computer, you can see the number of the page.
It's page 13 then.
Okay, I haven't gotten there yet.
No, you just pass it. Go down.
Right here.
One more. So looking at that, we didn't get measured for 2021, but we did get a special education status, though it is met requirement.
Yes.
So that was the only thing that was measured through this disaster?
Well, they're not, they're not linked. They're separate. And so the accountability rating is separate from the special education determination status. They were able to give us a rating on the determination status, but not the accountability rating for the reasons that were listed in the previous slide for academic growth and closing the gaps. Those simply could not be calculated.
Due to COVID.
Okay. Well, no, I just did. I saw a requirement and I stopped right there because I thought it was just declared as a disaster for the whole district. And it seems like one department actually was had a measurement of some sort.
Right. Well, each of the districts was able to get a status for special education. However, as Ms. Accor said about COVID and the pandemic, that caused each of the districts within the state of Texas not to receive an accountability rating.
Okay.
And they're separate. They're not, they're not together. So like the accountability rating is based on more STAR and CCMR and those types of performance data. And then the special education determination status is, it uses a completely different accountability, now I don't say program, but indicator statuses. Does that make sense?
It does, but I guess what I'm trying to figure out in my own mind is that how did you get in contact with those students to be, to actually get a measurement from them of any sort if most of the year we were, we weren't in school until the final six weeks?
Well, there's still ways that they were, the data was aggregated from those students. Online learning, like I said, their, the actual report that provides that determination status is from the results-driven accountability or the RDA. That hasn't been something we've presented to you all, but it's something we can later on. But that is a completely separate accountability system, so to speak, from just accountability, which is like everybody all together. SED has a very specific detailed accountability system that helps us identify very specifically down to the exact student where inequities exist or gaps exist so that we're aware and we can close them so that we're providing equal opportunities and things like that for special education students. That's what that report's designed for.
Okay. Well, and I guess that's why I was wondering about that because on the last time we briefly saw on the benchmark, I guess you could say, when it came to special lead, we saw that there was a major deficiency happening in that department. And then to get their 2021 report, it looks like, well, we met requirements, but obviously we didn't meet, I mean, I don't know how it is by met expectation, met goals, met or exceeded, or I don't know how.
Think about it from like a top-down view, right? So the determination status for SED is like right up here. Globally, like we meet the requirements, we're fine. But as we continue to drill down and get through different layers and different layers and we get down very specifically to a, an exact indicator, that's where some of our work needs to start happening as far as just making sure that as we, you know, take care of 80 to 90% of our indicators here, there might be possibly one or two that are, I won't say dire, but require our attention because it's less than satisfactory. And so some of the areas that we're deficient in draw the attention because of the need there, not so much that our entire program or just the district is, you know, in that particular situation. It just is really talking about specific indicators that we need to be aware of because if not, and they continue to not improve, then that could potentially impact the overall determination status for the district.
Okay.
Does that help?
Thank you. Don't serve for baking.
No problem. Okay. So we covered reading. Now onto math. And again, you'll see a trend here with TMIST leading the region and the state in just about all subjects and at all performance level descriptors.
GL stands for grade level. So approaches means we're almost at grade level. Meets means you are at grade level. And masters means you've surpassed grade level expectations. And those expectations are set by the state.
And again, moving on to reading five and reading six, again, a very similar trend with TMIST leading the region and the state. Math five and six, we've talked a lot this year about math not just being a areas for opportunity for TMIST, but just the overall state in terms of online learning and the impact that had on math and students trying to learn math through remote and distance learning. But here you can see that again, we are still leading. Reading seven, reading eight, very similar results. Math seven and eight, again, you can see where we compare and stand against the region and the state. Writing four and writing seven, again, leading both the region and the state. And then moving on to science five and eight, again, by a wide margin, especially in science five and science eight, specifically approaches and meets. Very, very good, very strong numbers. And then for social studies, again, similar trends with approaches and meets being ahead and just about the same in the region for masters. When we move on to high school and specifically the end of course exams for English one and two, very proud to say that these results look extremely good when you compare these to the region and the state. If you want to get specifically, TMIC is one of the leaders in the region when it comes to English one and English two performance. For algebra one, again, we've talked a little bit about this this year as far as just an area for some opportunities to improve and some strategies that we've implemented this year at the high school, specifically with some of the House Bill 454 or 5 measures that we are taking. Going on to biology, again, very similar, strong results. And of course, for U.S. history, same similar, strong results. We aggregate all of the tests together for the district. So anybody who took a math test, a science test, we combined all those results. And again, when we did that, you can see still that TMIST is leading the region and the state in key indicators. When we look at ELA and reading, when we look at the writing, when we look at science, and also when we look at social studies, it is clear evidence that TMIST is head above region and the state in those five subjects. When we look at academic growth, again, because the academic growth was not calculated for this past year, we are still looking at 2019 academic growth. So that has not changed, but I just wanted to throw that out there to show the comparisons that it is still something that we are focused on because at the end of the day, our goal is to make sure that all students are growing in some capacity. And again, you can see the results for EOC, English two and algebra one. Again, algebra one is, has been an identified area for us this year. And again, when it comes to all grades for both subjects, we are right at the state and region. When it comes to participation and just comparing percentages of students participating in the STAR EOC exam, you can see that we had a little bit of a drop off from 2019. However, we are still above the region and state as far as participation is concerned. Moving on to post-secondary readiness and the indicators that were measured there, we have attendance rate, annual dropout rate, graduation rate, CCMR relayed indicators and CCMR readiness indicators. And again, CCMR stands for college, career and military readiness. Looking at the attendance rate, again, right on par with the state, a little bit above the region. Annual dropout rate, 0% across the board for secondary campuses. Class of 2021 graduates, again, very, very strong when comparing region and the state. When we start talking about graduates and specifically being college and career or military ready, here are our percentages. Again, we look at college readiness, we're above the state or above the region within the standard, standard deviation points of the, of the state. However, when we look at career military readiness, you can see that we just about doubled the percentage from region and definitely do so with the state. So if we're not producing college-ready students, we are certainly producing career or military-ready students. And again, with SAT and ACT scores being above the region and state, that's a testament to our students also being college and career-ready. Demographics and distributions, looking at student information and staff information. Our ethnic distribution for our students, we have a high concentration of Hispanic and white students. When we look at demographics for students, 65% of our students are economically disadvantaged and about 47% of our students are identified in Title I. Students by instructional program, you can see here that for special education, we're about 10%. So for every 10 students, one of our students is in the special education Students with disabilities, specifically for our special education students, you can see the breakdown by primary disability. I'd say it's pretty much even in terms of distribution, except for non-categorical early childhood. Again, we have 376 identified special education students in the district. We look at the breakdown for teachers. Again, we have a very similar concentrate in Hispanic and white staff members, specifically teachers. When we look at teacher years of experience, we have a nice bell curve distribution. And the average years of experience for our teachers in the district is almost 14 years, just about 14, which is quite high when you compare our experience and our number to not only the districts in our region, but across the state. The average years of experience for teachers is hovering around eight or nine years. So we're about four to five years above that. Accreditation status for the district, again, because of COVID-19 and the pandemic, like we just discussed with the accountability rating, the, our accreditation status has not been impacted or changed. It just hasn't been assigned. So we are still accredited, but we have not received a newly updated accreditation status as a result of the COVID-19 Campus performance objectives, these can be read and viewed through our campus improvement plans. Our campus improvement plans are posted on the website. So if you click on one of these links here, it will take you directly to where it is located on our website. And we review these annually through the board and we did so last June and they were approved at that time. Specifically for progress towards meeting, board adopted HB3 goals. These are the college, career, military readiness goals that all boards in the state of Texas are required to adopt. We've already adopted ours and we also reviewed them back in November, at which point the board did approve of our progress toward both of those goals. A new indicator measure from the state is measuring our students' post-secondary readiness as they enter a four-year or two-year college or university. And so the state is beginning to track this data. So not only is it important for us to be mindful of what's happening here in the district, but to begin thinking beyond the district and looking at data as they leave us and are entering either a university or a college to help us better understand, are we truly preparing students? Are they being successful, not just with graduating in terms of, you know, walking with a certificate, but are they actually producing those results as they are in college or university? When we look at Academic Career Center, ACC, you can see the results there. When we look at the same for the high school, you can see a little bit more of a breakdown. And what's nice about the four-year and two-year distribution of the numbers is that it's a nice bell curve as you would see with any sort of graded exam. But what's nice about what TMHS has been able to do is if you look at the 2.5 to 2.99 and the 3.0 to 3.49, and when we go to 3.5, you can see that the weight is heavier on that side. So as our students are entering four-year universities, the evidence is proving that they are ready to perform and to not just perform, but to perform at a very high level, which is very, very exciting to, to know that, which means what we're doing is working. One of the other requirements for the taper is to talk about any disciplinary measures that have happened on the campuses in the district, but we do not have any. So there is nothing to report on this topic. Moving on to our financial standards, right now, we received a perfect score of a 100 and an A, superior achievement for our first financial rating. For revenues, you can see the breakdown right here. We total off operating revenue, other revenue, recapture revenue and debt service financing and TRS estimate revenue. You can see the grand total and what that breakdown looks like for the students. Expenditures have been broken down by operating and non-operating, and again, also broken down per student. Disbursements, again, we have it by line item. And then when we total it, those numbers should look familiar from the numbers that we saw on the last slide or the slide before. Our tax rate, our M&amp;O is a dollar 0.0684 and our IMS is .1456 for a total tax rate of $1.21. Fund balance, our fund balance is right here, general fund and all funds. And if you would like to know more, I am the person responsible for the taper report. So if you have questions, if we'd like to just ask anything specifically about the data and just as far as the analysis or the interpretation, I can be reached by email or we can give a, give a call to the district and I'll be more than happy to speak over the phone or just swing on by the building and we can talk then. However, that concludes the annual taper report for the district. Board members, do you have any questions?
I had a quick question on slide number 33.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's, it says 2021, but I don't see 2021's graduation rate.
Right. That's because this particular data indicator lags, so it's a year behind. So when we talk about 2021, we talk specifically the year before for graduates. So the data for last year and the, this year won't come to us for another year or two.
All the others were ahead. Okay, go ahead.
And yes, there are some that lag and some that don't, but this one does.
Yeah, your numbers don't match mine and Kim's. Obviously Stevens on the same pages as you.
Right, they're a little bit different.
If they're different, then I apologize, but these, this is the accurate, this is the, the one with the right numbers on it.
So Dr. White, I guess the only question that comes in my mind is when you're giving all those reports which said approach, meet, approach, meet and master, these are great numbers on the approach side, but does that mean that we're actually, are the 71% of our students, for example, and the one I'm looking at just the STAR reading fifth and sixth grade, does that mean that we have 71% of our kids that are either not quite there?
No, that means they are there. So approaches means that they are close to grade level, but not quite.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm taking the word with the grade level wording.
Yeah, so.
So that tells me that if he's in sixth grade, he's at fifth grade in six months or?
No. What, what it means is that the way they, the way the STAR test measures performance, approaches simply means that they are close to being on grade level. And if they get to on grade level, which is meets, then by the definition of the state, they are college and career ready at that point because they're on grade level and they meet all the requirements from the state. Approaches means that they are very, very close to that and they are satisfying the majority of the indicators that require that particular student to be college and career ready. However, there are still some indicators there that we need to draw our attention to because they just either have a master them or they're very close. And if they do, that will push them to that meets level. So our goal is to move as many of our students that are in the approaches to meet and masters.
That's what I'm saying. Like in this case, we have 37% in 17, but we have 71% of the lower end. So I guess my question to you and to the, and to the education, to the teachers would be, what do we, what do we as a board need to do to increase the number at least in the middle? Because you know, if we're at meet, we're, we're pretty much guaranteed that we're putting out, obviously more, more scholarship monies and everything else that gets more people into the camp. Our grades can get us in, but it doesn't mean we're going to pay the bill.
Well, we not only need to, need to get kids to approach, but every level should be moving up. Every kid should have the opportunity to move up. It shouldn't just be certain levels that we're looking at. We need to improve every child.
Right. And I can say that one thing we have done better at this year, and again, not wanting remote learning to be a reason why some of the scores are the way they are. But overall, as you can see, our scores are relatively strong when compared to the region and the state. However, I think what's going to start making the difference, starting at least this year, is this we're being way more data-driven in our understanding of what we should be doing because as we are reading the reports and better understanding the data in real time, it is helping us make those changes and adjustments on the spot right here, right now, instead of waiting till the very end of the year, then we look, then we review, and then we go in, okay, now we're going to make these changes for the next year. We're trying to implement those changes right now. And one of the ways that we're doing that specifically at the middle school is through the advisory period. We are using that period to specifically target students, knowing that before the school year had started, students coming back from COVID, we understood that there was going to be some deficiencies in math and reading. Therefore, we implemented that time period to kind of give us some flexibility with being more data-driven so that as we are looking at our formative assessments and looking at that data in the system, it's helping us create better groupings so that we're targeting specific students for specific skills and also assigning those students with a strong teacher that we know can teach those skills effectively to those students. And so that's just one example of what we're doing at the middle school. And in fact, because the data is telling us that it's working, we are wanting to look at bringing that advisory period to the high school so that we can also do the same at the high school level, not just with STAR, but with SAT, TSI certifications, FAFSA scholarships. So that will be something that we start looking at doing for next year too.
Better to have the plan in place and work with the data as it is proving and showing up instead of waiting because that lag period, you're already in a lag time because of the pandemic. So catching it early and making sure you're doing something about it is a wise thing for all of our kids, all of them. That's very good.
It's created a good sense of urgency for us so that as we plan and we move forward, we're understanding that we can't wait. We've got to get to the data to help us better understand what we can do right now. Because as we all know, waiting till the very end, that's just bringing us into next year because the past has already happened. We can't, we can't impact it or change it at that time.
And you have a brochure?
Yes. Do you want me to go get it?
Yes. Well, just tell us kind of what it is and then you'll, can pass it out because it's almost seven.
Okay. So a brochure was created to kind of just capture some of the heart of this presentation today and just to kind of showcase and highlight again, many of the successes that we've had despite several challenges in COVID and just some of the other things that have happened as a result of the pandemic. And so we just want to continue to start pushing out more information and literature that highlights the district, brings attention to our successes and just really celebrates our community for what it is, a family-first district that also prioritizes having students graduate college and career-ready.
Okay. And if you can count everybody here, be sure everybody leaves with one of those brochures. We try to make it easy to read and understand for the public as we know, when we start talking data as educators and we start using all these abbreviations, it's, it's confusing.
And if you don't have one and would like one, I'd be more than happy to get you one. So just let me know and I will make that happen.
Well, and here's the career and technical education that he made several months ago when he did a report for you. We're going to put these out on the front table also so when people are visiting the central office, they can find out the wonderful things we're doing at TM. It's a great school district. And you're going to make some more of these while, just a minute.
These are on the website?
They will be out tonight.
This one was just finished today. Good job.
Thank you, Dr. White. We appreciate it. That's very good information. It helps clarify a lot of things. You got to see it in our board book, but explanation is very good It is 7:01 PM, the 21st of February, 2022, and we're going into our regular board meeting. First portion of that is the public comment forum. The next item of the agenda is public comment and public, and public audience, which is the time for members of the audience to address the board of trustees through either public comment or public audience, if applicable. Before we begin, I will remind our audience members of the board's procedures for handling public comment. The public comment portion of our regular board meeting is available to members of the public who wish to address agenda or non-agenda items to be considered by the board. Anyone who wants to speak during public comment will sign up prior to the start of the meeting and list the agenda item or non-agenda subject they want to discuss. Each public comment speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the board. Any public testimony speaker who is speaking through a translator will receive up to five minutes to address the board. The public addressing tonight's agenda's items allows all speakers to have signed up before the start of the meeting to address the board regarding items on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous. Please also avoid using profanity, refrain from making personal attacks on others during your opportunity to speak. Last, we ask that you not discuss students who are not your own child. Yelling inappropriate, uncivil or discriminatory comments will not be permitted. If you are speaking on items that are not on tonight's agenda, then the following applies to those speakers. If a group of people want to speak or be heard on the same topic, the board asks that they designate a spokesperson to avoid needless repetition. The board should not allow more than 30 minutes for speakers on the items not on tonight's agenda. The board has adopted rules to preclude the abuse of open forum for, for example, anyone uselessly repeating the same comment or complaint meeting after meeting. All comments by person speaking on either the agenda or non-agenda item will be limited to three minutes per speaker. I also caution you that your public comments should not complain about individual school employees by name or position or other than your own child. Identify students pursuant to Texas government code 551.074, 551.0821, 551.082. As presiding officer, I am obligated to determine whether a person's addressing the board has attempted to administratively resolve any complaints or grievances about which they want to address the board that involve district officers or employees. If the venture comment and the judgment of the presiding officer constitutes a complaint or charge against employee or officer, it may be necessary for me to interrupt and ask you to stop and direct you to proceed with the school district's formal grievance procedure or had the item heard in executive session depending on the nature of the complaint. depending on the nature of the complaint. If a speaker seeking board resolution of a specific complaint that concerns should be addressed through the district's grievance process, which can be found online, including policies DGBA, FNGGF. Units forms can be obtained at any campus administration office or in the central administration office. And thank you. Our first speaker is, I believe that's Johnny Herrera. Please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Today's topic will be about the TM-Tolosa Midway Baseball Field. The deterioration of this field throughout the years that I've been, we've been attending this school has been really, really bad throughout, throughout the years. Since, since, since my son was in school, ninth grade, I mean, we had a beautiful warrior halo behind the catchers. I mean, it was, I mean, it's identification of where you're at. Right? Now, anybody that comes to the field, nobody knows where it's at. There's no, no signage or anything saying that this is Tolosa Midway. Another thing is our audio. Excuse me. Our audio's since been broke down. There's no, there's no announcements. Our announcer has to carry his own Bluetooth speaker up to the post logs and that's announced there. Y'all know, beginning of the games, our National Anthem is a really big part of our, of our baseball program. Another thing is our batter's eye. The batter's eye is really important to the batters and their safety, being that they need to be able to see the ball. Because I mean, we got pitchers throwing anywhere from eighty to ninety miles an hour coming at you. They need to be able to see that coming at them clearly so they can react if it is, and they're going to come strike them or whatever it may be. I just feel that we, y'all know, last year we made a, a good run in the playoffs. We made history going in four, four, four rounds in the playoffs. I just feel that this, the little things that matter. You know, it's just, I feel that we owe it to our, to our student athletes.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera. I believe this is Tracy Mudd.
Hi. My name is Tracy Mudd, and I'm here to address the board today with some concerns of a former teacher, Tammy. I'm here today because she posted on social media on Wednesday that y'all, the board meeting, was having a sanction to remove her teaching certificate. For one, I don't know how she found that out because nothing was posted about the board until Friday. So I came to speak on that. This woman has been arrested four times, and I don't know if y'all are aware of that. But you really do need, I'm humiliated. My grandchildren are humiliated. I have, she was saying on social media that it was because of an abusive relationship that is far beyond the truth. I have picked up my grandchildren on the corner of Violet and Leopard while the woman was in a police car. I have called the school. I have reported it. I have done above and beyond, and the woman was still employed by TMISD. I am requesting or wanting or hoping that y'all will step in and sanction this woman's license or submit to the board of teaching of all of her deal. It took her home getting raided and my grandchildren getting taken away before anybody stepped up to the plate. I had reported to the principal. I reported to everybody. They did nothing. I feel that they covered their own, and I'm very, very disappointed. I was, I've been in Tolosa all my life. I've worked with some of these people on this board personally. I am a good person, a taxpayer. All my kids graduated here. And for this to go on for so long is beyond me. I know she has personal friends on the board, and I don't know if that was leaked to her about the meeting, because then she retracted. So that's why I'm here. And I hope y'all do the right thing. Because if it's not this district, she's going to work at another district, and she's been teaching these children under the influence of drugs. That's all I have to say. So now y'all are aware.
Thank you, Ms. Mudd. Next one is Kelly Rosenbaum.
I'm just going to reiterate what Johnny Herrera said about the baseball. Same repairs that he said. I don't want to repeat myself. But I do want to say that I was blessed with the opportunity to watch this stadium be built. And I was a part of, you know, watching it be designed and everything. All of, all of that being said, I've also watched it go down, just dilapidate over the years. Both of our sons have played there. And it opened when my oldest was a senior. And now it's pretty much gone that my youngest is a senior. And it just, just the pride that those boys have in their team and their coaches and their, their school needs to show on their field. And that's with any athletic building, field, anything. You go out to TM and you don't know, there's no sign saying this is Warrior Stadium. There's no sign saying anything like that. And there's nothing on the field that says that. If, if, if that could just be, you know, repaired, the sound system would be awesome. I, I wrote up a long speech, and of course, I'm not going by any of it. Y'all all got my email. I mean, the one thing I can say about the sound system is it, it's the spirit of the stadium. Everyone looks forward to hearing their kid's name be announced. Everyone looks forward to all of the music being played in the middle of the innings. Sweet Caroline, who has not gotten up and sang to that. You know, and the boys look forward to picking out their walk-up songs every year. And they also look forward to, I'm sure some of y'all know, they also look forward to picking out the rookies' songs for them, like, you know, "Do You Want to Build a Snowman?" You know, they love fooling around with the younger guys. But this all has to do with their pride in their school, and it all has to do with the pride that they have representing their colors. And if y'all would just show them that you are as proud as they are, it would sure go a long way. And in order to do that, just fix some of the little things that need to be fixed. They were, they were addressed to different people numerous times and haven't been, you know, worked on or haven't been repaired or haven't gotten quotes on them or, or anything. So, you know, timely manner would help. Y'all, some of y'all were contacted in September, and now it's February. It's game time. It's not done yet. The time to work on things is before the season or during the season. So I appreciate your time. I appreciate everyone who responded back to my emails. It does go a long way. Thank you.
I believe we went to the school board appointee to place four, the administrator, administrative oath of office and statement of officer and seat of the board. Thank you, Ed. Rubio is here?
She's here. Goodness, yeah. Okay, raise your right hand. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I state your name.
Janie, I'm Jan.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
I will faithfully execute.
But I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
At Tolosa Midway, I am stewardess.
At Tolosa Midway, I am stewardess.
School board trustee, place four.
School board of trustees, place four.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will do.
And will do.
And that's my bill.
And that's my bill.
For serve.
To serve.
For serve.
For serve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state.
And of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I want them to be in the background.
Okay.
I never get a picture. Here we go. Yeah, so they can all come out. Congratulations. Does she have?
I'll hold it and then I'll get it.
All right.
Honorable Judge Rubio, we appreciate you doing this for us and coming up and taking care of this.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You'll have a good evening.
Thank you.
Janie.
We appreciate, so maybe to be a member of the board, but we are lacking a vice president. And by BDA local, BDAA local, vacancy occurs in the board. Other than the president shall be filled by majority action of the board. In addition to, you know, we're not, we didn't have an election to appoint it, so we can appoint just the vice president. So at this time, I would like to entertain nominees for, for a vice president. Do you have any nominees?
I nominate Kimberly Boone.
Are there any other nominees, please? Any other nominees? Okay. All those in favor of Ms. Kimberly Boone to be the vice president, all in favor? I suppose motion case seven zero. Congratulations.
Be careful for yourself.
Now you need to switch.
Well, you don't have to right now.
Okay. But next time.
Next time around. Okay, and now we go into our discussion action, action item agendas to discuss and consider the election of vice president, which we just did and voted on by BDA locals. And presenting campus showcase to Tolosa Midway High School, ninth through twelfth grade. And I believe the high school is here to give the presentation. We welcome you. This is, this is an honor and a pleasure. We appreciate it so very much for y'all taking time to come up here.
Good evening. So we're doing our highlights this evening, so Tolosa Midway High School. We currently have our fearless leader, Gabe Alvarado, is out sick today. We have our head principal, three assistant principals, Ms. Lucas, Ms. Cardenas, and myself, and our dean of instruction, Mr. Rick Ruiz. We have a faculty and staff of about a hundred and fifty, numbered to a hundred and fifty, combined with, you know, our certified teachers and paraprofessionals. And we currently service a little over a thousand students, a thousand thirty-six students currently with ninth through twelfth grade.
I'm superintendent, Mr. President. Our mission statement at Tolosa Midway High School is that Tolosa Midway High School will create a safe and secure secondary campus able to educate and develop every student into a highly educated, successful, well-adjusted, productive citizen through the implementation of both research-based and curriculum-based instruction, satisfying the rigorous expectations of Tolosa Midway and defending school district. The belief statements that Tolosa Midway adheres to, we believe that we must solicit parental support and involvement. We believe that we must provide students the guidance and opportunities to make wise decisions in the school setting, not just in the school setting, but outside of the school setting. We believe that we must equip students to compete in the workforce, that we must equip students to survive in the real world in terms of their ability to manage time, health, and personal finances in a global society. We believe that we must also provide students the guidance and opportunities to make wise choices academically and socially. We believe that we must foster a student's self-worth and acceptance of self-responsibility. We believe that we must teach students tolerance of the diversities of society. And we believe as well that we must solicit parents, community, and faculty to instill in each student a high standard of integrity, work ethic, and community service.
So the next couple of slides, we're going to highlight our students. The first one being our Special Olympics of Bowling 2022. We had Aaron Martinez, Brandy Rodriguez, and Amaris Gomez coming home with first, second, and third place at the Uranus Pass Bowling Alley. We also have some community service projects that our students on campus are involved with. Some of the ones we have, our pals, they do an Adopt an Angel with our primary students. Our Golden Brigade does the breast cancer awareness walk. Our Boys Basketball does our toys for Driscoll Children's Hospital. So they raise, they do a toy drive at one of their basketball games, and then they take all of these toys and deliver them to Driscoll Children's Hospital for those students, for those children. Our Cheerleaders and Girls Soccer also do a Adopt a Head Start Classroom. NTHS, our National Technical Honor Society, does backpacks for homeless in conjunction with our sheriff's office here. And then our Spanish Club did some hours at our local food bank. So some of the campus highlights that we have, we reached out to our sponsors and organizations, and this is what we came back with, that they came back for. Our BPA, we had five students competing at Regional held at Cal Allen that advanced to state, which will be held in Fort Worth this upcoming March. The events the students competed in, interview skills, fundamental accounting, business law ethics, extemporaneous speaking, and prepared speech as well. Our girls track season has started, and the tribal relays will be April first and second. We had our ROTC participate in three-area drill meets. They competed in four air rifle competitions against schools from across the nation. And they competed in three local ROTC competitions consisting of PT, air rifle, academic events that were performed. Over seventeen hundred man-hours of community service, participated in college scholarships, working with the local military recruiters to enlist four seniors into the military, and ensured all juniors took the ASVAB exam to open doors to the many career opportunities that they have available to them. They also finished third place in the annual Miller High School NJROTC meet. Our choir members, Hazel Rubal and Isabel Casada, earned a place in the 2022 TMEA All-State Choir that was performed on the twelfth of February. And then our JV baseball, they had a fourteen-and-ten record last year, and they're hoping to continue. Our MOP trial team will be competing to continue. Our mock trial, uh, team will be competing at the Region Two Mock Trial, uh, competition. They did that January twenty-ninth. Uh, our pals, uh, Peer Assistance Leadership Program has been hardworking with our mentoring a lot of our kindergartners, first and second grader students, and both behavior and academic areas. Each week, our bigs travel to the primary campus to engage their littles in activity designed by the students and differentiate for each student's individual needs. International Studies, uh, Club, they've been waiting patiently to finally travel abroad through the COVID quarantines. Each month, the two different groups meet to learn about things of their culture, traditions, laws, and eve-ever-changing travel restrictions, music, art, and entertainment of France, Italy, and Switzerland, getting ready for the 2022 group to Ireland, England, Scotland for the 2023 group. And our National Honor Society members, as always, were inducted this past week, and so, um, the next section?
Okay, we're going to go ahead and continue with some of our campus highlights. We do have our welding warriors, and I believe our sponsor, Mr. Vincent, is here. We did have some students that did place, uh, first place. Jose, he did place in the Nuasis County Junior Life Stock Show, uh, that first-place pipe division. And then we also had him, uh, place second in the Beeville Welding Contest as well. Uh, we did have Melinda Sanchez placed fourth in the vertical plate welding, and she's a freshman, and that's huge. Our welding program is really taking off. It's part of our C T E. Mr. Vincent has done a tremendous job, uh, and they're, they're really, that's a life skill. They're, they're really, uh, they're doing well. Our varsity cheerleaders did compete. Uh, they received a national bid this year. They went to, um, the Southwest Regionals in Austin, and they competed also at the state level in Fort Worth, uh, at the U I L Spirit State Competition. We have our A S L, uh, club that was a honor society that we're inducted into the National Society, uh, of A S L, and that was on February fifteenth. That was held in the PAC. Um, American Sign Language guys, that's one of our foreign languages that we offer, and that group, uh, that is a skill that, that the students enjoy, and it's definitely a, a real-world skill, uh, for them. We have, yes, sir.
Miss, I'm so sorry. Because we got into the society, does that mean that we're, we could graduate interpreters?
Well, they continue on the path, sir, and then, yes, they can go ahead. Uh, I know Delmar does have a, an interpreting program that they, that they can continue on.
March, though.
Oh, I apologize for that. Uh, we got this information, I guess, a couple weeks ago. Mr. Alvarado was, uh, getting that, that, uh, you know, getting the information from our, from our, um, teachers. But that is a really cool program. Um, my experience, I was actually one of the assistant principals at Fay Webb Elementary. I don't know if you're familiar with that. We were the regional day school for the deaf in Corpus Christi Independent School District, and those babies would come to us at three and four years old, uh, and all they knew were our interpreters that could sign to them. Their parents were in the process of learning, uh, A S L, so they could communicate with their own children. And so that program is, uh, pretty special to me, because those babies would come from Alice, uh, Primont, all the, the schools around the region to C C I S D at that one campus, uh, and then they go to the, the vertical middle school and then the vertical high school there. So to see that come to, to TM is, has been, uh, it's been special. Yes. We have our, our Rex Games, which is the video games, the esports, um, and actually Ms. Ochoa, who is our A S L teacher, is sponsoring that. And I don't know if you guys saw that story. Uh, we had a group of students that were invited to the, like, the All Madden video game competition, and that's huge. So they're gearing up for that. That was also pushed back. I believe they're going sometime in March. Um, our boys' swimming, we had some swimmers that advanced to state. They competed recently. I believe it was this past weekend. Uh, we have coming up, we have our One Act Play that's coming up. Our girls' basketball team, we got the big game tomorrow. We're going, uh, to Cuero, so good luck to them. Uh, we just had the state swim meet. All of our spring sports, I know we've got baseball, we've got softball coming up. We have all of our, our U I L academic meets, speech and debate. So it's a, a busy spring season for the high school. So we're looking forward to it. We're, we're ready, and, uh, we're going to be competitive in everything, so. They kind of showcases all that we do. That's what, thank you to Ms. Cardenas for putting all that together for us.
We also did have an all-state, uh, band member along with the choir that went to San Antonio to perform.
Very good. Very impressive. Doing great things.
Yes, sir.
Kids involved, that's important. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a question. Uh, last month, when y'all were here, Mr. White gave, or Dr. White gave us a presentation about getting rid of Delmar classes and A P classes. Is that still something y'all are doing, or y'all changed y'all's mind on that?
There's been, uh, some communication since that time, sir. We have met with Dr. Bob Montes over at, uh, at, at Delmar. Sorry, he is the, uh, director of early college programs there. And one of the things that we focused on is creating a situation where there's a recent House Bill that has passed on the, uh, higher education side that limits the amount of hours now that students are able to accumulate towards their degree plan. In the past, it used to be somewhat, it's somewhere in the range of a hundred and seventy hours. That has shrunk down to about a hundred and fifty hours. So one of the things that that has prompted us to do is then go back and review the courses that we're going to be able to offer students. We want to make sure that we're able to provide them with courses that will transfer to wherever they go, regardless of whether it's a big state school or a smaller junior college. And what happens is when you get beyond that hundred and fifty hours, the tuition almost triples for those students, and they pass that cost on to the parents. So one of the things that we're trying to do now is establish a specific set of courses that our students will be able to follow, that they will take with them without costing them any of that potential triple tuition cost down the road. So it's kind of like a common core for college students. So in other words, so these courses will transfer wherever they go.
So are y'all doing Delmar again?
Yes.
Or here, what's going on? Because y'all, last time y'all said you were canceling Delmar and all, uh, A P classes.
Right, that, that is through, through Delmar College. Yes, sir.
So y'all canceled that?
No, that's the discussion that we're currently having.
It's not gone.
So now you're doing it again?
They had a, had a meeting with the Delmar officials to clarify some of the things that, uh, TM was struggling with, uh, such as changing textbooks. Uh, and, you know, we had the books we were expecting to use, and then they changed professors. They said, you need a different book, and so there was a time lag in getting the new book. So just things like that, where we felt like we needed more communication and cooperation. And so when they had their meeting with the Delmar, uh, representative, they felt like they cleared up some of those problems.
Clarification?
Yes, we can. Uh, in, uh, Mr. Alvarado's parent meetings, he made that clear that Delmar was bad for dual credit.
Didn't we have something at the high school?
Pardon me, sir?
Didn't we have something at the high school?
Yes, sir, last Saturday. That's correct, sir.
Then you sent us the board members' information on.
Yes, sir. That was after the initial Thursday meeting that we had at the, with, for our middle school students.
Well, they were very clear that they canceled it all, and they weren't going to do it, and they didn't want to do it.
They sent us the information just last week or two weeks ago, so that was after they said it had been canceled.
I just want to know why they changed their mind.
Well, specifically to kind of just go a little bit further from what Mr. Ruiz said. Again, as we're continuing to learn and build a new partnership with Delmar, initially, we ran into so many problems, as Ms. Accord just alluded to, but as we've continued to evolve that relationship, the more we've been able to learn and understand exactly what we can do, specifically with Delmar, to get us on this right track right here. And so I don't want to go as far as to say that we were going to cancel, because we never really were canceling, because we would still have done some of the dual credit, uh, C T E courses through Delmar. So one way or another, that partnership would have remained. We're just trying to reshape it to where it is a balanced and a relationship that positions TM in such a way that not only are we not accruing any additional costs or taking any additional hits, as far as what Ms. Ruiz has said about students leaving and having to increase costs on their end because of the imbalance in the way they earn those credits. So we're just trying to reformat all that. And so if there was confusion from, um, a prior, uh, presentation, we apologize. But our intent is to, again, offer the best, um, the best courses that we possibly can. And if Delmar can make us, um, be in a position to do that, then we absolutely want to take advantage of that.
Yeah, our kids need all the opportunities they can have to get college credit hours with many different areas, not just one specific area of getting college credit hours. We need to offer them everything that we can, just like other districts do.
Yes. Any other comments, questions? We appreciate you all coming up there and doing the presentation. Y'all are doing great things. Continue to do so. Thank you very much. Thank you. Now, number three, discussing the center out-of-state field trip request for Washington, Philadelphia, New York, TM High School English, one students, October twenty-eighth, November the fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Is Lauren right here? Yes, I am. Okay. So, um, yeah, sure. As most of you know, I do the international studies at the high school, and Angela Stigall kind of takes care of the domestic aspect of it during the eighth grade. But because of COVID, there were, this group that I currently have as freshmen, they weren't able to have that opportunity. And it hit me, I traveled with her this past fall with the eighth graders who had been postponed for two years, and it really kind of, um, opened my eyes or reopened my heart to the history of our country and how connected we can be to that, if we can see some of these iconic sites, that a lot of these kids have no idea exist or why they exist or how they came into existence. So I was teaching, uh, introducing a rhetoric, um, unit with Martin Luther King Jr.'s speech, "I Have a Dream." And one of the lines in that speech was, "We, we stand in the symbolic shadow of the man who signed the Emancipation Proclamation." And so I stopped them at that point and asked them, where, where were they when this speech was given? And they couldn't tell me. And so I had to prompt them a little bit and said, well, who signed the Emancipation Proclamation? And they were like, oh, well, that was Abraham Lincoln. Of, of course it was. They knew who that was, thank goodness. I said, okay, so where are they? If they're in the symbolic shadow of Abraham Lincoln, where is this speech being delivered? And they couldn't tell me, because half of them didn't know what the Lincoln Memorial was. And that just hit me, that these kids who would have had that opportunity to travel with Ms. Stigall and didn't get that opportunity, need that opportunity. And I found this tour that highlights all of the iconic historical sites in Washington, D.C., um, Philadelphia, and New York. And I just felt like it was a trip worthy of bringing to their attention and giving them the opportunity. So I know that I'm not a history teacher, and I, I don't, I don't profess to know everything about all of these historical sites, but our district has so many, specifically at the high school, we have so many new teachers. New teachers who are inexperienced, new teachers who aren't comfortable taking trips with kids, don't know how to go about organizing that. And I talked to Ms. Stigall, I said, I don't want to step on your toes. I don't want to do this yearly. This is just for this one specific group of kids who didn't get the opportunity because of COVID. And so I asked Mr. Alvarado if I could present them with this opportunity, that we wanted to travel during an intercession. So the dates proposed are, are dependent upon the school calendar that's adopted for that year, but the intent is to travel solely during intercession, so the kids won't miss any school. They would leave on a Saturday and return on a Saturday. So they would give up an entire intercession, as would I and whoever chaperones, uh, plan to attend with us. But the things that they could see would make them be more connected to our country's history, which right now, if they watch the news, everything is kind of crazy, and I think we lose touch with how important some of those things are for the kids to feel connected to our country. So I want to take them on this trip, show them the sights, connect them with a great tour director who can, who can present the information much better than I ever could, and, um, with the experience of someone who's traveled with kids for years and years and years. Um, they will be juniors when the trip happens, so they will be enrolled in U.S. history at the time, so that will go in, you know, very nicely, make a great, great segue for the things that they'll be learning in their U.S. history course, and probably help them assimilate that information and retain that information, because as we know, we read something in a book and we retain it for about ten seconds before we lose it again. So being able to see some of those things would help them retain that information and instill the pride in our country.
Good presentation. Looks like it's all going to be out of pocket for anything.
Yes, all out of pocket. Um, fundraisers, if they want to have them, I'll organize those, but for the most part, just like our international tours, the payments will go directly through EF, and, which is the same company that I've used with international travel for all these years, very reputable, and the district won't be out of pocket for anything.
So these are the eighth graders going in to be freshmen, or these are the ones that are freshmen right now?
These are current ninth-grade students, and they'll be juniors when they travel. So they weren't able to go when they were in the eighth grade because of COVID.
Okay.
It's not this coming year?
No. No, sir, it'll, it'll be the following year. It gives them two years.
On our calendar, though.
Exactly. Well, well, it, it'll, it'll happen. I just don't know that it'll happen during the specific dates that I've requested, because we don't know when intercession's going to fall. So if we can get a private group, which is what I'm hoping for, at least thirty-five travelers, then we get the freedom to schedule it when we want it. We're not dependent on, you know, being grouped with any other groups around the nation, and then I can make sure that it happens during an intercession. So teachers won't be at, we won't have to have subs. It's convenient for everybody.
History teachers will be invited to this trip?
Excuse me?
Would history teachers be invited to the trip?
If they want to put in the work, yes, sir.
I mean, what I'm hoping that they would, I mean.
Right.
Historical, historical.
So it depends on how many students we actually get signed up as to how many chaperones. I don't like to charge my chaperones to go on a tour where they're working. So, uh, for domestic trips, it's one chaperone for every ten spots earned. So depending on how many students we have, that would be how many chaperones I'd be able to invite.
Any other questions?
It's administration's recommendation that the board approve the out-of-state field trip request to Washington, Philadelphia, and New York for the TM High School current English one students, as presented.
All right, do we have a motion administrator? TM makes a vote. TM seconds. Very good opportunity. Benner, thank you. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? Those are both motion case seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussing the center out-of-state trip request for Flemmingburg, Flemingsburg, Kentucky, TM High School Students Welding Institute Welding Contest, April the twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
Jimmy Vincent, our outstanding welding teacher here.
As long as you don't ask me where Flemingsburg is, for sure. I'm pretty sure it's the home of a ton of weed or something. Uh, but there's a couple reasons why I'm here tonight, and that's, uh, one is that we have a fantastic welder. Um, sometimes I watch him, and it's kind of like having, probably, you're horse fans, but if you had Secretariat in the bar and you'd want to take him, get him in a race or two. Um, and so he's proven himself by winning. Um, and this all came about from last year. I had a, a student that really wanted to go, and I felt really bad, because he kept begging me on to go, and I kept saying, hey, you know, this is an out-of-state trip. Schools don't really dig that. Like, it comes with a lot of hassles and so forth. And, and so I kind of, I felt bad, because I didn't take him. Well, he fooled me. He just, he went to a welding contest here, and then he just took off in his car and drove twenty-four hours straight the next day and welded the next day in that contest. He placed second in that contest, and he won so much stuff that he had to rent a U-Haul to get back. So I just remember him driving in with the front tires of his little car barely hitting the ground, and a U-Haul full of stuff. And, and I thought, you know, that's when it came to recognize, you know, to me. I never think of what we do as something that's above, you know, everybody else, but it came to my heart at that point, you know? And so, um, and if there's any consolation, I can, this boy's a better welder than the one that went. Uh, but I, I, I just think it's a big opportunity for, to get these kids out and let them see and get involved internationally. I think this young man has earned it. I wouldn't be here and speaking to you if I didn't think that, that he has earned it. Now, granted, the best welder in the world can have a bad day, and I tell them all the time, you have to be dang good and have a lot of luck, you know? That's just how winning occurs. Um, because you'll be in there with a lot of good welders. Um, but it kind of came, the things that he can win, being there, he, I believe it's a fourteen thousand dollar scholarship. Of course, at Kentucky Welding Institute, they want to, they want kids to come there. They want the best in the nation, and that's why they host it. Uh, they have, he would win if, if he won, and that's why I'm requesting to drive the truck, because I don't want to have to rent a U-Haul to a little car or to an airplane. So, um, but the, the, the. So, but the, the prize for the champion is an SA200 welder, and that's a weld, Lincoln welder that you see on the back of most of the truck rigs that you see down there. I think it'd be a huge thing, even for him to walk amongst that and see it and get the feel for it, but if he was to win that, it would give him such a help in his career. And I think that money would, would come back many times in a young person's life.
It's just the one student that's going?
Just one. And to be honest with you, I wouldn't mess with you if I didn't think he was good, you know, I wouldn't bother your time because I know you guys have plenty on your plate here. Every time I come to one of these, I have a new appreciation for what you have to deal with. I don't want that job, but I do commend you for taking that task on, but in turn, I, that's the thing, and we just plan, it's a, it's about 19-hour drive, 19 and a half, change, whatever, so it'll take two days to get up there and two days to get back, and that is, I don't know if that's cheaper than airfare, probably is, it's just time. And so, that is the plan, they're trying to ask you guys if you're willing to help us out. I, again, just repeat myself, he's, I think the young man has earned his, his chance, you know, I think he, he worked so hard and he's in, I have after-school shop every day, and he's in there constant, constant, and he works, and he is very, very good, one of the best I've ever seen. He's better than me in a lot of ways, I'll say that. And I say, I'm proud of the kid that's better than me, in no way, shape, or form do I feel like I need to be the best in the world, I just need to try to make the best in the world out of what I have here. So, I don't know what else to say, I don't know what to do.
After that, it goes to us.
I guess my question is that transportation, since they're driving, will the school be providing the vehicle for them to go in?
They're going to use a CT truck.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure we were...
No, it doesn't say nothing about the gas, I don't know, we have gas cards or fuel cards, but...
They'll be taken care of.
Okay.
But do we throw that in there?
Make sure everything was good to go for y'all.
What is the cost of the competition, sir? That's the only thing that you didn't put in here.
It's like 20, $25 or $20, that's a... Yes.
Oh yeah, it is in here, I'm sorry, I missed it, at the very bottom, I'm sorry.
There's likely to be about 500 kids there welding, it's a, I've only seen the pictures of it in the...
They're toward the USA skills.
Pardon me?
They're toward the USA skills. So, yeah, that's, well, Philip, you know what my question is? You might as well answer it before I ask it.
We, I have the funds set aside for these type of events, and we do have the funds.
Good.
Y'all ready?
Thank you.
He's going to go.
You're going to have an answer.
I was going to run before I got rejection.
You can't take another picture of Hillary Francisco again, though, okay?
Okay.
All right, if you take another picture of him, we're going to have to talk about a different, a different amount, okay?
Okay.
All right.
It's the administration's recommendation that the board approve the out-of-state field trip requests to Flemingsburg, Kentucky, for the high school student to attend the Welding Institute welding contest, as presented.
I'll make that motion, move it second. Janby seconds. Any other comments or questions? Great opportunity, glad you want to do this for it.
Good answer.
All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. That's why you don't leave so quick. Okay, item number five, discuss and consider approval of memorial bench at TM Softball Complex.
Ronnie Fair here?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think y'all have the proposal here.
Yes.
Like I told y'all last time, this is a total cost, just not to y'all, nothing to y'all, it's all taken care of, all we need is y'all's approval to set it, set a bench, and there's a couple of pictures on there, the very last one is a black one, and that's the bench that we're looking at, I don't know if y'all have it on there, is it three pictures, okay. You know, there's another one that's called the garden bench, with a little bit of hot , place here, so we pretty much have money for the, for the traditional bench, and what it'll be is, on the top part, it'll have a picture of Coach Green and a picture of Vanessa Barbosa, the athlete that passed away also. In the middle, it'll have a description, you know, in memorial of, and then we will have, underneath Joe's name will have the years that he coached, and underneath Vanessa's name will have the years that she played, and all state. And we'll have a little saying in the middle, under, in memorial, we just haven't come up quite yet with a saying. So I spoke with the Everlake Memorials, Joe McCabe is going to be doing it if we do get the approval, like I said, it would be no expense to y'all, and what, I mean, it depends on where y'all, or he'll allow us to put it, if y'all approve it, we were looking at, possibly when you pass the ticket booth in the softball field, there's that one light that shines down, we were thinking if we could put it right there at the bottom of that light, that way at nighttime, you can, people can, when they pass by, they can actually sit there and read it. I think, if you have any questions?
I do, Ms. Coach Green, do, you know, I know that you're, now with CCSD, would you do this at CCSD ballpark?
I'm retired now, by the way, but...
I mean, because here's the thing, how many other players have passed on for it to be at the ballpark?
For me to know that, I don't know that, I mean, because I was the only coach for 17 years.
Exactly.
And since they, since Sally's, Joe took over for one year and then Sally's been there, I don't know of any former players that have passed, no sir.
Because we have memorial benches, but they're at, they're at the little flower garden out there on the side of the school. I mean, for it to be on the ballpark itself, I mean, you know, that's one of the concerns I have. Maybe, maybe it's just my line of business, but...
Yeah, and, and, go ahead, I'm sorry.
But I know that I don't, you know, I know that you don't see a memorial bench in any other ballpark, you might see plaques or...
Right.
Walkways or something on the concrete.
Correct.
I don't know, that'd be something you'd want to do, maybe a granite thing like that, but the actual cemetery bench itself, you know, it seems kind of odd to have it at a baseball field, to me.
Well, I mean, I've seen them in different parks, now, the only reason we wanted to do it there is because they were such a big part of TM softball. And, you know, I don't see it personally as a, like a burial-type thing, it's, to me, it's just like a, yeah, a cemetery of two people that were a big part of TM softball.
Because I know Ms. Barbosa's on our wall, our Hall of Fame wall.
Yes.
And I mean, you know, it's, I mean, I would think that paid tribute to her talents, but, I mean, I, and personally, and I've been around the state in every different ballpark myself, softball and baseball, and I've never seen a memorial bench or one, and I can, I mean, like I said, I know, I know in your years with, with Ms. Brenda, y'all didn't have, there's definitely not one at Cabanas.
Well, I know, and I don't know that it's ever been proposed, to be honest with you, so, you know, I'm not sure about that. And like I said, you know, we can only do what y'all approve, so...
Right, no, I understand, I'm...
And we have the money to do it, so whatever you approve, I mean, we don't have a choice, we have to do, do that, so, but, I mean, I understand your concern.
Because what the board would have to do is just like anytime, like we receive a gift, like in the TM Foundation, we have to approve the gift, and this would be considered a gift.
Gotcha.
Things that we have to do, anytime a donation or anything comes in as a gift, we have to hold it as a gift, except it's, even though y'all are paying for it.
Right, gotcha, because it's going to be on the campus, I assume.
Yeah. Comments, questions?
Different memorials around the district, I'm not sure.
Well, I think there's one at the intermediate.
There's, there's...
When you walk in, high school...
Yeah, and here at the middle school, too, yeah.
One right here, when you walk into the high school...
So they have them on the campuses.
Yes.
I'm not sure that it matters where that memorial's placed, we're not renaming the softball field or anybody.
Yeah.
It's just placing the bench there.
Are we deciding on where to place it today?
No.
Okay, that's what I, I didn't think...
No, we're not deciding on that, we're actually going to be, after the recommendation, voting for it because we're, the school, even, they're receiving this as a gift, that's just like we do with the foundation, or anytime anything's donated, has to come through board approval, as a gift.
So, are y'all okay with...
So, we're going to...
Put it, who knows where?
Well, I don't know about who knows where.
I'm just, I mean, at this point, they, they don't know.
I guess, I mean, the money's going to go either to a bench, to a plaque, whatever y'all approve, I mean, you know, this is what we came up with, or, and I say "we," meaning me, Coach Delgion, and lots of the alumni, this is what, you know, we kind of decided, that's what they would raise the money, but whatever y'all approve, you know, personally, yes, we would love the bench, but it's up to y'all, I don't know that placing it, you know, I think the significance is softball.
I agree with that.
Well, I'm just...
The significance is for softball, just like the memorial for the entrance to the high school is for the owner of the past wife, the other memorial here, the entrance to the high school, the bench that sits there as you walk in on the left-hand side, for all memorials.
The memorial where the flowers are at are actually for that baseball player that we bought, the baseball diamond that passed away in Louisiana, serving our country, and that's the only reason I'm saying that, we, you know, for that family, we moved it outside of the fields. To come back for something like this, in that case, make a bigger bench, because Joe Green's son played sports and he passed away, and how many other names go on this bench? But for that, then build, then get a die and put everybody's name like you have in the front of the school.
They're just, they're just saying two, they're just doing it for the two.
As in, as motivated as this alumni to do this, not saying that if it did come to us, we would have refused that, it never came to us.
Yeah, and I'm not, I mean, there've been tons of great people and great employees that have passed away, and this is something that his ex-athletes and her teammates decided to do a fundraiser, and like I said, we can only do what y'all let us approve, I thought the bench, you know, we, in talking, we all thought, well, what about like a monument, whatever, then, you know, someone brought up the bench, and it's like, you know what, that sounds like a good idea, so everybody was kind of was on board in that aspect. I understand what you're saying about as future or people that do pass away, you know, you know, I, I don't have an answer for that, because this is just our concern right now.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're talking about, this bench, not other monuments, this one, this one.
You said you brought this up earlier, I don't recall this topic, and don't you choose it?
We weren't here, so...
A lot happened on January 17th, I don't know, because, man, y'all talked about everything, got computers and everything else. There was one board meeting and everything happened that one day.
That's what happened.
Don't miss it.
And I lost my cake to this guy, too, couple of everything else.
No more, further questions?
Okay, it's administration's recommendation that the board approve the memorial bench at the TM softball complex as a gift to Tulsa Midway ISD.
I'll make that motion for the location and the gift.
I have a question, which bench are we...
The very last one, the black one?
This one?
The one on the screen? No, not that one, I'm sorry, you should have three, right?
It's the black, the next one.
There's only two.
There's one more, the very, yeah, it's kind of hard to tell, it's basically the brown one that you see, it's in black.
So you're not doing the back?
No, we're not doing the back, unless y'all want to donate some money towards us, we could.
Is that a cremation bench, maybe we can put their...
It's a brown bench, it's a brown bench, but it's going to be in black, and he actually has it at his shop right now, so he would just need to do the laser engraving, and we, like I said, we're fighting on having a picture of both, and then there are years underneath, and then just in memorial, and then little saying.
I, I think, the recommendation was for the location and the acceptance of the gift, a motion and a second. Any other questions?
I think it's a great tribute to Patrick and Vanessa.
Comments, questions? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero.
Six to one.
Six to one, okay, little...
Thank y'all very much, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, discuss and consider approval of financial audit, year 2021. Thank you.
You all ready? Y'all should have gotten a PDF of this in your board packet, so you look, this is exact, this is the exact same report that you got before, and I'm going to introduce, we have with us this evening, this is Frank LeVorn from our auditors, LeVorn and Kishnik, and I'm going to turn it over to him, he's going to kind of walk through what he did, and then we'll be here for any questions. And I just preface this, the audit is one of the big things that we do in my office, my staff is not here, but they did the majority of the work to get us ready to get all the information together so we can have a good audit every year, and I'll turn it over to Mr. LeVorn.
Thank you, Secretary of Defense, members of the board, I just kind of want to briefly walk through the report and feel free to ask questions, is that going along? You've got the report, if you'd like, we turn over to page two, there's several pages in it, this is the independent auditor's report. Page two, I'm going to point out, this is the opinion, the overall opinion, the opinion, we state that in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information to Tulsa Midway, and the school district has a volume 71, 2021, and respective changes in financial position where applicable, cash flows thereof for the year then ended, and according to the county principal, still accepted in the United States, remember, the overall opinion for the district. We will turn over to several pages over to page five. Page five is the management discussion and analysis, it's an informational report of management to the board or readers of the financial statement, and I want to point this out because it simply brings out a lot of the highlights about the financial statements, does, gives you some information, comparative information, and points out some things that are very informational in conjunction with your reading the financial reports as you do. This is a good section to look at as you review your financial statements. Maybe go over to page 16, this will be the first financial statement presented. Page 16 shows the, well, the statement of net position, this is like a balance sheet that it is picked at August 31st, 2021. The district operates numerous funds, general fund being the largest fund, but you have that service fund, special, special revenue funds, many funds that the, that the district operates, and this page brings all those funds together on a full accrual accounting basis, which, which means it's appreciation taken in account for your, your buildings, your vehicles, everything that's listed there, it shows all your assets, all your investments, it shows your investments in land, all your equipment, your buildings and so forth, then it drops down, picks up all your liabilities, including all your current liabilities, your liabilities, there are long-term debt, such as bond, and you'll see those down in your liability section. The bottom section, you'll see it highlighted as net position, this is the equity of the district at fiscal year end, you have an equity of $18,781,824. The largest portion of that equity is not liquid, that's the $16,223,358 that's invested in your capital assets. Then it breaks, it cops down and shows amounts that are restricted, which they program for debt service, an unrestricted portion, and we add up to the... debt service, an unrestricted portion, and leave that up to eighteen million, seven eighty-one, eight twenty-four for your net position, and all funds in the district at fiscal year If you'll look at the next page, which is page seventeen, this is called a statement of activities, it's like an income statement. And again, this is taking all the operations of all your funds and combining them, and taking into account for, uh, all the expenses by functional area, have functions eleven all the way down through ninety-nine. Uh, these are the functional areas that you incur expenses. These expenses include depreciation that's taken on vehicles, buildings, whatever depreciation is taken on, that's included in your expenses, uh, which is not done in your fund accounting, but it's done on this particular report. So your total expenses for your governmental activities were fifty million, seven forty-four, four forty-six. Some of those expenses were offset by program revenues, you have some charges for services that help offset expenses, you also have some operating grants that help offset those costs. Uh, if you go over to the next page over, you'll see column six, governmental activities, and all, all those numbers are negative numbers, that means for your expenses, these program revenues were not adequate enough to cover those expenses, so you have a bunch of negative numbers there. But if you drop on down to the lower portion, you're gonna see that those expenses are picked up with your general revenues. Your general revenues are your property taxes, investment earnings, check the three-one-three payments, uh, monies that come from the state, forty-eight million, two fifty-five, or seventy-five, and they offset, the cost above was at forty-four million, five eighty-six, so that you ended up with a increase in your net position of three million, six sixty-eight, nine eighty-three last year. Uh, let's see, we began the year with fifteen million, one hundred and twelve, eight forty-one in your net position, and with the three million added, you ended up with the eighteen million, seven eighty-one, eight twenty-four. This is, this is what we call government-wide statements, and, uh, not, not what you used to see during the year, but, I'll switch over to the fund account, which is, uh, which you see as you go through the year, you turn over to page twenty-two. Now, we're going to the fund account, and this is showing the various funds, major funds that the district has in operation. And I think I'm gonna stick with just going over the general fund, but on page twenty-two, uh, the first, uh, column, as long as there is disclosing the information on revenues and expenditures of the general fund. So the general fund, you had overall revenues of forty-one million, one hundred and forty thousand, one twenty-eight. You dropped down, you had expenditures of thirty-seven thousand, one forty-nine, five thirty-nine. Uh, going down below that, you had some, um, refunding bonds that were issued, and payments back to the escrow agent. Bottom line, uh, you're adding, for the general fund, you're adding four million, forty-six thousand, eighty-nine to your fund balance this past year. You began the year with sixteen million, nine twenty-two, three fifty-five, and ended up with twenty million, nine sixty-eight, five forty-four, to your fund balance. And here. We implemented a new, uh, governmental accounting standard to board, um, statement this past year, I thought I'd point that out to you, the dollars aren't big, but it's kind of a new presentation. If you look over on page, uh, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, this is dealing with what we call fiduciary bonds, and fiduciary bonds are your student activity bonds. And, uh, this presentation, the past, uh, looking at page twenty-eight, there was a section in there, the bottom line was that like due to students, it's like a liability. With GAD, with the new GAD implementation, uh, they're giving it in equity. Uh, this is amounts that are in, in those, those student activity counts that are restricted for student activities. So that's the presentation on that. And then the next page over, uh, page twenty-nine, this is showing how we got there. It, uh, it shows the additions that took place in the prior year, and the deductions that took place. Uh, the beginning balance was a hundred and thirty-six thousand, two nineteen, it grew down, uh, net of twenty-eight thousand, seven twenty-eight, so we ended up in that position of a hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and one, student activity funds restricted for students. Now, just, have you look over, beginning on page thirty, these are the notes, we begin the notes to the financial statements, the notes to financial statements are an important thing to look at as you review the financial statements yourselves, because they give information about the entity, uh, the type of accounting procedures that you have, uh, give more detail on some of the numbers we're looking at. We'll go on, starting on thirty-eight, page thirty-eight. For instance, it gives detail on your, your investments, or deposits, and what your investments were in, more detail there. And on the next page, uh, looking over on page thirty-eight, we discussed that you had more investment in capital assets, and so this page on, on page thirty-eight, gives more detail about your capital assets, breaks it out into major categories, such as buildings, equipment, vehicles, capital leases, so you can see beginning balances, increases, decreases, ending balances for your investments, your capital assets. And then the depreciation is shown below, was taken in various functional areas, total amount, four million, four million, four fifteen, depreciation. And then another good breakout is on page thirty-nine, there's a lot of detail on your long-term debt. Page thirty-nine, maybe it's on to page forty, but it uses a lot of information on activities taking place in your, in your bonds, and other, other debt that you have. So that's very informative to look at, and looking in conjunction to your financial Another page to look at, that's, that's helpful, is page fifty-two. Page fifty-two, there's a note in there that summarizes the fund balances, the fund balance that's sitting here, funds this past year, that's how they ended up at August 31st, 2021. And then another statement to look at is, uh, page fifty-five. This is a budgetary comparison schedule of the general fund. And it shows what the original budget was, what they think about the original budget. And then the column in there for the final amended budget, and then column three is the actual that took place, uh, shows the revenues at the top, and then you come down, the expenditures by function, and then it compares the actual, column three, you get to column two, it shows the variance, what the budget did, and what, uh, the difference was. Uh, on your revenue side, you ended up pretty close, covering what the revenue was budgeted, five dollars, within five thousand dollars. On your expenditure side, if you come down, uh, actually, you go over to the next page, on page fifty-six, and it shows, uh, in line eleven hundred, it shows that your actual, you budgeted negative three hundred and seven thousand, you ended up with a positive of three million, nine ninety-four eighty-nine, so you got a positive variance, there's got less than what the budget, about four million, two ninety-seven, eight sixty-five on your And then one more page, let's see. When we come in and do an audit, we also, the district, uh, operates numerous federal, federal funds, they have revenue funds, they're federal funds, federally funded. And on page seventy-one, this is a bit over here, the audit, it's scheduled by, it starts at the top, uh, the, uh, talks about the financial statements, uh, says they're unmodified, that, that means that's good, we didn't modify it in any manner, it's a good report, so it's an unmodified report. There's no findings on material weaknesses, uh, no significant features found. Drop down in the middle of the page, it discusses the federal programs, uh, no material weaknesses identified, no deficiencies, significant deficiencies. The report for your federal programs, it's unmodified, that's good. And it shows the federal program, detail, we have to come in and make a selection of federal programs that are required to be audited under the single audit, uh, guidelines, and policies and guidelines on how pick these programs. ESSER program is a new program in the district this past year, and so this was a selection that we used for testing the single audit.
Yeah, ESSER funds, if you remember, those are the COVID-related funds.
And then, lastly, over on page seventy-four, we're discussing the federal programs, uh, page seventy-four, this, this shows in detail all the different federal programs that were in operation, uh, the expenditures in this past year, uh, six, six million, four hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight thirteen, your federal funds. I'd be glad to have answered your questions, Mike.
I know it's a lot of information, I know it seems, uh, a little dry, but this is one of the things, uh, one of the big, uh, things that we do every year. And if anybody has any other questions, and obviously, at any point later, if you have any questions about the financials or any information in the, in the audit, just, uh, just let me know, and I'll be glad to.
No findings.
Answer that. But the good thing is, good opinion, no, no material weaknesses, no, uh, no, uh, issues of non-compliance or anything like that. And that's what we do every day, we try to make sure we do everything to stay that way.
Very good, very good. Thank you for the report, taking us through it, appreciate it, and, uh, the numbers are numbers, right? That's what accounts like, right? They like to put them in columns.
And you don't take a time.
I'm just an affluent hills to pay.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it's the administration's recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the presented to Los Midway ISD annual financial audit for the year ended August 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Corrigan. Do we have a motion administrator recommendation, please?
Motion, no.
Okay. Stephen, second? Dan, second? Okay. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? I suppose, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, appreciate it. I'm glad of the good audit, that is, it is remarkable.
Thank you for all the help, because it takes a lot of cooperation between the two of us.
Yes.
We'll get it.
Yes, thank you.
It does have a good staff that works for me.
And I'll get, uh, everything to you as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you need some of these back for signing purposes?
Uh, no, those are, those are y'all's to keep.
Okay, now we go into, it's another report, August budget amendments, I believe Philip has that as well.
Yeah, and just to clarify, this is, this is just a report. If you remember, um, uh, in August, I asked for blanket authority, just in case I needed to do any, uh, small, uh, adjustments, uh, before the audit was done. And so, all I'm doing this evening is I just want to report to you that, um, you know, gave me blanket authority, I think at the limit was thirty-five thousand, but it was just to make sure if I needed to tweak a budget, uh, because y'all adopt a budget on the function level. And so, it did turn out that I did need a little, a small budget adjustment in the food service fund, so this is just a report. You don't have to vote on it, it's just for your informational purposes. I did have to do this one, uh, adjustment that you basically pre-approved me in, in August, and so I'm just reporting to y'all, uh, what I had to do to adjust, uh, I was over budget a little bit in function fifty-one in the food service fund, which is very, very small compared to function thirty-five, which is the biggest function in the food service, uh, fund. So I'm just reporting to y'all the, the small adjustment. It didn't change the bottom line, I just had to move a little, uh, sixty-five hundred dollars from function thirty-five down to fifty-one. So it's just a report of what I had to do based upon the authority you gave me back in August, so you don't have to vote on it, it's just for your information. Y'all have any, uh, questions about that?
For the food service, correct?
Yeah, it was just an internal, uh, budget adjustment that I had to do between the two functions in the food service fund, to keep the function fifty-one, uh, from not being over budget.
Yes, I'm.
Like I said, this is just a report, uh, you already pre, basically pre-approved it back in August, and I just wanted to communicate to you that I did have to exercise, uh, that authority.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Okay, there's a report, discuss, and then, I don't know, very discuss and consider renewal of district property liability, auto, with stall.
Okay, this is another, uh, event that, uh, we do every year. Our insurance, our property insurance and our liability insurance on our buildings and our vehicles renews every March first, and I'm pretty sure that coincides, because they know we have plenty of money, because we collected all our taxes, uh, in January. And I have, uh, Mr. Don Clark from Carla Insurance that handles this, and I'm gonna turn it over to him to kind of go over the, uh, details of the, I'm just gonna call sticker shock. I'm a, I'm a pretty popular fellow this time of year among school boards, including my own, so I apologize in advance, but unfortunately, it is where the property market sits right now. Um, I'll give you just kind of a brief insurance education, what's driving these costs right now, is it's not so much the first layer carrier, it's what's called reinsurance. Um, people who are not familiar with what reinsurance is, insurance companies buy insurance, and that's what the reinsurance market is. And where the reinsurance market gets hit is, for instance, in 2021, we had twenty-one one billion dollar disasters, um, throughout the continental, just throughout the continental US. They had the handout? They had the handout? Uh, that, it was in your packet. This, this handout's one I'm referencing. Each one of these little different circles or dots or whatnot represent a billion dollar claim that took place within 2021. People like to say, what does that have to do with me? We didn't have a claim. Well, no, you didn't, but you buy insurance, which buys reinsurance. And for five straight years now, we've had better than eighteen one billion dollar disasters, um, going back to 2017 of Hurricane Harvey. What that has done to the market is you have people who have exited the market. I mean, it's, it's an investment vehicle, I mean, that's what insurance is. So we've had, we've had numerous carriers who have decided, this isn't a good thing for us to invest in, because we keep losing money. So they've left, which leaves, now we have a shrinking pool of providers. And those people are saying, you know, we're gonna stay in it, but instead of giving you a hundred million dollars to, to play with, we're only gonna give you fifty, because they're gonna take that other fifty million and try and do something else to invest it. So what happens then is I'm trying to equate it to something that makes sense to people, excuse me, think about going to the grocery store right now and going to the potato chip aisle. When you get down to the potato chip aisle, we used to have forty-seven varieties, different manufacturers, different flavors, things like that. Now we've got about ten, and their shelves are empty. And that's what's happening with the insurance, is people are just, they're getting out of the way because they don't want to lose the money. Um, AMRIS, who is one of our predominant carriers, used to be made of eighteen different insurance carriers. They're now down to fourteen. So it's, it has been very trying the last five years, and unfortunately, the people who get hurt by it worst are the insured. Um, you know, we have, we went to over twenty-five different carriers, and I want to be very candid with you, I say we went to over twenty-five different carriers, knowing that fifteen to eighteen of those probably wanted nothing to do with the insurance anyway. But we're gonna ask them, I mean, we have to check, we have to do our due diligence for y'all. And that, I mean, that is the truth, that's what it came down to. We had, um, responses from about nine, but nobody wanted what was called the primary layer. And the primary layer is the first dollar payment. They all wanted to be excess. So that doesn't do us any good. If we don't have a primary layer, the excess does us no good whatsoever. Um, it ends up, AMRIS stays with us, um, the other vehicle that they use to help offset their costs is deductibles. Um, and I lost a page in the wind, so I don't remember what your deductible was. Do you have it up there, sir? Was it, please, sir?
Yes, if you would, Greg.
Was it, please, sir? Do you have the, the premium comparison, the premium summary?
Yeah, it's, uh, I'm the.
That one's ready. That's okay, I can see. Y'all are still at two.
Each one ninety-five.
There we go. Y'all are still at two percent, which I will tell you, and in all sincerity, you're very fortunate that you're still at two percent with an aimstorm deductible. You're one of two schools that I have that's still at two percent. Most of them, you've got compadres very near you, they're at five percent. And that is a significant difference when it comes to deductibles, when it comes to storm time. Um, you think you've got a hundred, let's call it a hundred and eighty-nine million, the difference between two percent and five percent is significant. So the fact that you stayed there is an absolute blessing. Didn't change your AOP deductible, didn't change your wind hail deductible, didn't change your minimum deductibles. So that is all a blessing in and of itself. The rate, it's not a blessing. I mean, I don't, there is no way to sugarcoat that, but we, we have done everything that we can do, and this is the best that we've got to offer. It's the best anybody would have to offer. I mean, we, we represent over sixty districts from Mathis down to the Valley. So y'all are not the only ones. I'm delivering news to districts that have two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollar schedules, and we only have a hundred million dollars worth of insurance coverage. So that's not fun at all. Um, you've got some options, if you wanted to take a higher namestorm deductible, you go three and five percent option. It looks good, hey, we can save a hundred and twenty-two thousand, hey, we can save fifty-seven thousand. I encourage you to think about what happens if you have a storm. Because that hundred and twenty-two thousand is nothing. Because you have to remember, your deductible is a per building, per occurrence deductible. So every building that has damage is going to be subject to that two or five percent. And it's not the va, it is not the cost of the damage, it is the value of the building. So just remember that when you're, when you're making those considerations. You know, the casualty is pretty static, and then the casualty, relatively speaking, doesn't cost much for school districts, because you've got your governmental immunities, you carry low, um, auto liability amendments, because you can't be dinged on that because of courts. So that's pretty nice. Your, your problems, and every school district's problems, is the property right now. It's just, it's, it's not how it used to be a few years back, when we could come in here and go, hey, your rate's flat, we're going to give you a three-year rate guarantee, don't worry about it. Unfortunately, it's, that's not where we are right now.
And another issue that we, that we also have to look at is, you know, we, we put our buildings on the schedule, you know, when we build them, but as cost goes up, we're, we are constantly kind of increasing our values just to get them close to what are, closer to what a replacement value would be. We're not one hundred percent there, and no one, I would never suggest that we, that we, uh, insure at one hundred percent replacement cost. But also, we adjust those values every year, and basically they kind of make us adjust those too, because they're not going to give us insurance unless we're, unless we're properly covering, uh, what it would cost if we did have to replace a building. So that plays into it a little bit too. Because, you know, we built our elementaries twenty years ago, we built our high school, uh, almost forty years ago. To build a brand-new high school today, I think, to rebuild the high school today, if we had significant damage, that would be way more than what we're, we might be carrying in on the books. So we have to constantly, uh, keep adjusting that too.
New high schools are about two-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars a square foot right now. That's what it's cost.
So this is one of those, it's kind of painful, but we can't afford not to do it.
Well, no. We can't afford not to do it. It's not an option.
And I concur with, with, with Don said, we, we could go up to the higher deductible, uh, but I can tell you, the difference in the price is not, you know, it's, it's not, that doesn't make it, that, that cost savings is not, um, enough to justify the difference in the deductible if we did have a storm. And that's, you know, that's what insurance is. They're betting that we're not going to have damage, we're betting that we will and we'll be covered.
If, if you look at, it's, it's easier to do by worst-case scenario, because I don't have your schedule in front of me, but if you look at the hundred and eighty-nine thousand, hundred and eighty-nine million dollar T I V, the three percent difference is five-point-seven million dollars in deductible dollars.
Right.
That's, I mean, if you look at that versus a hundred and twenty-two grand, it's, it's not even worth considering.
And that's per building, right?
No, that, that five-point-seven is, would be your total T I V for a district. You would, every building would have to suffer a dam, would suffer damage.
And then if you look, if you do look at on the, on our audit that we just did, if you look at the pages where we talk about the fund balance, we have kind of, you know, we set aside a little bit of money to cover that, a, a, a big deductible, that in case we, we needed, uh, we do have a little bit of cushion in our fund balance to cover that, uh, at the two percent, uh, rate, we're, we're able to, we'd be able to absorb that. Uh, basically, we're using our, we earmarked a little bit of our savings account to cover if we did have a big deductible, if we did have a building with, uh, major damage.
If we looked at just the middle school, I won't give you such a, a worst-case scenario, middle school has a building value of thirty million dollars on it. So five percent of that is going to be one-point-five million would be the deductible, two percent's going to be six-hundred thousand. So just on that one building, it doesn't make sense to buy up to the five percent.
And we are, I guess we are fortunate to be able to be, even be at the two percent. Like Don said, other districts aren't even offered that. It's basically the three or five percent or nothing, so.
Yes, I don't tell anybody we have that.
Oh, trust me, I don't. I don't run around going, hey, they got a two percent, and you're at five. That's, that's not part of the spiel, I can promise you.
So I see on here we have cyber, uh, coverage for this next year. Do we have cyber coverage this year?
Yes, same amount. Um, we, in, in an effort, because of current circumstances, um, we tried to get an increase in value for that, due to the loss, and due to some parameters that aren't in place yet. We got the hundred thousand again. We tried to get a million, um, but our program will not go up until this claim gets completely settled, and then they'll look at it. And other carriers, you know, cyber used to be.
Because that's not much hundred thousand.
It's not, it's not. I agree with you a hundred percent. Cyber used to be a really easy coverage to buy, until they started figuring out that it is one of the largest claim items in the insurance industry right now. So they're requiring additional, and I know that they've been talking, uh, with Ms. Paintman, talking about the requirements that the technology group has, MFA, and all kinds of things that.
So unfortunately.
She taught me how to turn a computer on, so I'm not going to talk about computers in front of her.
So unfortunately, this is, uh, this is, uh, just really, really bad timing, that we happen to have a cyber claim right before we.
Sign it back up, yeah.
So it's unfortunate timing, but we are, all the issues that are coming up with our current situation, we're going to look at everything and figure out what we need to do to, uh, better protect ourselves, and that'll afford us maybe to get some better coverage later, if we, if we, uh, do some things to better protect our system from, uh, any cyber threat.
Once that claim gets satisfied, satisfied, and some more protections are put in place, we'll be able to go back out to the open market and, and see what we can bring to the district at that point. But those things are going to have to be done first. And it's not just, it's not just y'all. I have multiple districts that can't get cyber right now, because they don't have the things in place they require. And the big one is the, uh, MFA, multi-factor authentication.
Which is what we are starting this semester right.
So every time you log in, you're going to have to.
Do something else, like get a text or something like that.
Get a code or get a.
Like the bank's audit, yeah?
Yes, yes, that's where, that's where we're going to have to go.
So we'll be able to make an amendment at a, at a later time, once we're done with the current situation?
I just would look and see what's available. We'd have to just look and see what, once we get this claim settled, then I'd have to come back and ask.
It's not something we can do before the summer.
Right.
It's not, yeah. You're going to have to get some distance from this claim. And it's going to take a while to do the things that you need to do too.
Rate increase really is not much more than inflation, is it, right now, anyway?
It's really not, it's not. I mean, it's, but you started at such a high number that it, it looks like such a high, I mean, it is a high number, I'm not going to pretend that it's not, that's a lot of money. Except for Philip, he seems to find it in all the nooks and crannies out here somewhere.
One good thing about, you know, this, it, uh, renews on the first, next Tuesday. Uh, so we prorate it, so six months of this increase, uh, comes out of this year's budget, which we have, and then the other six months will come out of next year, so we'll just have to plan for next year. Uh, but for now, we can take care of it.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Accord?
Okay. It is recommended that the board approve the continuation of the district's property, casualty, and educator's legal liability insurance coverage at the stated premium rates totaling one million, six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, three-hundred-and-forty dollars for the coverage period of March first, twenty-twenty-two to March first, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Accord. Do we have a question? Jan, do we have a second, please? Kim? Any other comments or questions? Well, you didn't hurt us too bad, but you got to have it, right?
I didn't hurt you at all. Let's make that clear.
Just bringing, just bringing the information.
Right, I am the messenger. But, I mean, but just rest assured, we worked hard on your behalf, and we've worked hard on all of them, so it's just one of those years.
Appreciate it, may I understand?
Yes, sir.
You have a motion second? Any other comments, questions? Are those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your time, thank you. This is discussing, consider substitute teacher daily rate adjustments, Ms. Accord.
Um, sure. Talk us through this, so.
Two thirty.
Thank you. There you go, that's, that's fine.
The numbers start off two, two forty.
Just like any other, uh, agencies out there in the labor force who are struggling because of the COVID shortage, we're in the same boat as this school district. Before COVID hit us a couple of years ago, our substitute pool used to consist of anywhere between a hundred and fifty to a hundred substitute, uh, in our substitute pool. That means that even though our substitutes we share with other school districts, we still had a good amount of substitutes to pick up, uh, our absences. Well, in the last two years, we struggled. When, when we came back from COVID, we had twenty-five in our pool, twenty-five in our pool. Well, we've been able to, to raise that number to somewhere between fifty-five and sixty, but we, that's still very low in comparison to the number of absences that we have. This, we just finished a substitute payroll, uh, this past week, and they were telling me that this is the biggest payroll that we've had, was it ever, Philip? It was like thirty thousand dollars. That means that we have a lot of absences in comparison to what we've had before, and we simply don't have the substitutes to cover all those absences. And when we don't have that, that's not fair to the students, and it's also causes great chaos for the campuses, because they have to farm kids out, and they have to move kids, and they have to find teachers to cover, and they pull parents, and it is not a good situation. So we try, we, we try recruiting, we've had a lot of, of substitute trainings, we had two in January, we had one in, in the middle of the afternoon, and then we have one at night, and then we just, and we, I think we recruited maybe like ten in January. We had one last week, and we had eighteen new subs come, we had that one in the evening. That way we can catch the people who are working in other school districts, and maybe they can come apply with us. But it's, we're still hurting, we're still hurting. And we think it's because, if you, if you look at, if you look at the surrounding school districts, and what they're paying, some people pay more than us, and we share our substitute with this list of school districts, right, we share them. And we know that because we all share the same software, the A S O P system, and we can see when they go to Flower Bluff, they're working at Flower Bluff and not here. So we felt that we just need to adjust our substitute rates, because we pay ninety dollars flat. We did that a while back, and we've been at that rate for a long time. And this school year, before the budget was adopted, I had talked to Philip, I said, can we raise it to a hundred dollars? And he looked at that, but he just, at that point, he just didn't think he could do it, so it didn't, that recommendation did not pass. But when you look at the substitutes, I mean, all the surrounding school districts, and what they pay, and they usually, we pay ninety dollars flat, they usually pay three different categories, for a substitute with a high school degree, a substitute with a four-year degree, and then a certified teacher. Of course, everybody's act with a certified teacher. The only thing is that the certified teachers, most of them are retired, and they cannot fill in for your vacant spots. So we felt that we needed to raise our prices, I mean, our salaries to compete, to be able to compete with some of these districts that we're losing our substitutes for. So we're saying, our proposed adjustment is a hundred dollars for a person with a high school degree, a hundred and fifteen for a person who has a four-year degree, and a hundred and twenty-five for a certified teacher. And so, ah, that's a lot of money. But if you look at the daily rate, look at the bottom, it says a hundred dollars is twelve fifty an hour. You make, you make that at McDonald's, you know? At fourteen thirty-eight, four hundred fifteen and fifteen, sixty-three, that's, you know, it's not that much. And, and I'm, we're always trying to see what kind of tactics we're going to use. I came to the office and I talked to Alex, because I went to McDonald's the other day, and as they gave me my little meal, they also gave me a little flyer that says we're hiring. I said, we're doing this, we're doing this little flyer, and we're going to pick the day next week, and then we're going to, once we get it printed, every parent that comes to the drop-off lane, we're going to hand you one of these. Everybody on the same day, or? We are, we just, we just, we just, we're crazy.
Sit him out there, work hard.
Every go crazy, trying to figure out, how do we get the word out there? Because we're really trying, and we need, we need a little help. And that is what we've been forward tonight, and adjust them for our sal, for our salary for our substitutes. Any questions?
So you're saying the teacher attendance rate is?
You got COVID, we've got COVID.
You got COVID into that? Is that, is that what's causing the teacher rate?
You always have athletics, you're always going to have athletics, and you're always going to have staff development. But in addition to your regular absences that you would have for the, the regular reasons, you throw in COVID, that is a nightmare. Yes or no? It is a nightmare, the whole program.
Plus you're coming out of a pandemic already, we've got exhausted teachers.
Yes, we do. Uh, last month, Philip, I mean, Patrick had what, one, one grounds guy or none?
Uh, we were down to one maintenance guy.
One maintenance guy.
At the grounds crew.
And had, I mean, and it's just, they all, they work together, even a group, and a teacher, they all eat together, and I know everybody's tired of the mask, except me, I wear my mask everywhere.
Except you.
It, well, because I feel like you're, you're far away, you know? You're far away, but, you know, they get exposed, and then they do get sick, it's very contagious, but everybody's got to be, have to be responsible for themselves, just, you know, we can't do very much, you know? But we do need a little bit of assistance, we feel that this will help us. And we scheduled a substitute orientation for next month already, I don't remember what date, but we're going to hold it.
Let me, on our substitutes, do they, I mean, do we provide like a lunch for them or anything, or they have to bring their own lunch, or have to pay for it, or?
Oh, no, they, everybody, this is all we pay is ninety dollars, we don't do anything else. When we do the orientation, we bring water and coats and snacks.
While they're, no, when we hire, I mean, if they come to work.
When they come to work, no, that's all we do.
I mean, our teachers have to provide their own lunch.
Yes, anybody does. But we think that this, this will help us.
Ms. Anna, um, one of my counselors actually has a cert, they, they, they send them through like certification class at Delmore at C C S D. And without that certification class, I guess that class says you have X number of college hours, they do pay over a hundred dollars for that, if you have that card. But if you don't have that card, or you don't have those college hours, they pay like sixty, seventy dollars, and then like that. Uh, I noticed that you only put one rate, obviously you don't want to give them all, give us all their information. And then I see with ours, we only have degree, uh, certain, four-year, or high school. And this high school rate that you're charging, is there, was there any college hours to back up that rate, or? Are we doing through rate?
I think he's asking for the first tier.
Right, the first tier.
I think one of the criteria for our subs is we, we do incur, if they have college hours, most of our subs do have college hours.
Quite a few of them are in this four-year, you know, but they're still getting, they were getting ninety dollars.
So like, if you had like, under, like, sixty hours, sixty hours was considered a four-year pay, and they, they, I mean, and you all had it when I worked here myself.
They had a range.
Right, so I mean, is that just a flat rate that you're going to change to?
This is a flat rate, depending on your degree, when you're finished, complete[1753.82] This is a flat rate depending on your degree, when you're finished a complete degree.
Your rates are...
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
But we do not have a distinction. We don't have another category that says, you know, if you've got so many college, you might not have a college degree, but you have sixty college hours. We don't have a separate.
You're associates.
Associate's degree.
It doesn't, there's that.
Yeah, there's no two-year degree on there.
No, we can certainly amend, I mean...
No, 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 I'm just asking because, I mean, we threw all these other districts, and I know that a lot of them have a gift of so many hours to substitute or, and, you know, and that's what I did to pay my last two years of college.
The majority of the school districts only had these three main categories. And the other, the other area where they had, that I did not include, is that after 10 days on the 11th day, some districts pay an additional $10 for a long-term sub. I did not include that here, but that's the only other distinction that I saw when we did the research.
So does this fit in your budget?
It does. At the moment, I can tell you, I might, I have the funds to cover it now because 99% of the subs are Function 11, and that's the biggest function group that I have. But I can tell you that maybe by the end of the fiscal year, I might have to maybe use someone around to cover it. But for now, yes, I mean, unfortunately, it's what we have to do to...
Well, hopefully, by that time, COVID will...
To be, and yes.
You know, there, and our teachers won't miss so much.
I think our numbers are kind of mirroring that everybody else's, that things are kind of going down, so barring another variant or something like that, hopefully, this will get better.
And this will start March 1st if the board approves it?
Yes.
Subs get paid, they're included in the bi-weekly payroll. They get paid every two weeks. It's about, after you work, if you do work a two-week period, we have a schedule. After you work the two-week period, you generally get paid about a week later. You get paid for those two weeks. But of course, it could vary, you know? If we have an intercession, it might only be one week. But we will start March the 1st if y'all approve this.
I get it. It's about time that they had something. I know we can't complete with Mercury Portland because they got more money.
Yeah, don't say the GP word.
Yeah. They have more money, and they know what to do with it over there. Okay, but it's a very good thing. Ms. Cora.
It's the administration's recommendation that the board approve the substitute daily rate as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Cora. Do we have a motion administrative recommendation? John, do we have a second, please? Few seconds. Any other comments or questions? I think it's a good thing. It will help. Hopefully help with getting some words. Can we have a motion second? Is there any other comments or questions? All those in favor? As opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Next item, a discuss and consider bus driver hourly rate adjustment.
Patrick's going to talk to us about bus drivers.
Good evening. Very similar to what we just talked about, shortage of bus drivers. It's nationwide, and we're just trying to keep up the challenges and keep our bus drivers that we have. We currently pay $20 an hour for entry-level bus drivers. We have a step system that goes up to, I believe, 16 years, and we give about a $0.12 increase per year. So we're capped off at $22 an hour. So we're a little bit behind the other districts in that. Our entry-level pay was good. The other Cal Allen, Robstown, George West, all caught up to us. There are $20 an hour to match us. Where they exceed us is in the senior pay. And I'm not trying to get us caught up there. So what we're proposing is a dollar increase in the entry-level pay. And then I propose, instead of doing the $0.12 steps, that we just give the years of pay there. Zero to five would be at $21 an hour. Six to 10 would be at $22 an hour. And then 11 or more years will be at $23 an hour. The school that we don't mention is at $24 an hour. And what's interesting, what they've done is they got rid of all the steps. Everybody, whether you've been there six weeks or you've been there 30 years, they all make $24 an hour. So I think we need to reward the length of service a little bit, so we put those steps in there. I drew out the hourly because you think that's a lot of money. You're talking about $23 per hour. You got to realize that bus drivers only work four and a half hours a day. They're set unless they give routes, and it's only 178 school days. So you're only looking at about 18,000, a little bit over $18,000 a year that we're paying our bus drivers. It is very difficult to get a CDL. If some of y'all may have had your CDL in the past, and it was a lot easier to get, I can tell you, I have my pilot's license. It was, to go get your bus driving certificate, CDL, it's more difficult. The pre-trip for the school bus is more than what I had to do on an airplane before my check ride. It is ridiculous what you have to go through. And now, on February 7th, they changed the program again, and the entry-level driver program, you have to go to an approved curriculum. And you complete your exams in there, then you're given a number that, when you go to DPS, you have to give them that number before you can sign up to take the written exams. So they're making it just more and more challenging to get a CDL. So by this dollar, I'm just, we're trying to just keep the bus drivers we have. I did lose a bus driver last week, but he got a great job. I mean, I can't compete with the post office. He got a $6 an hour raise and the benefits for the post office. I wish him well. I mean, he's bettering himself and his family. So, but we can't compete with that. But we're trying just to hang on to what we've got. So that's why we're recommending the dollar increase.
And I will say, we had a bus driver meeting in here a couple of weeks ago, and one of the people said, is there any chance we could get an increase? And the others were like, yes, that would be good. So we know the need is out there.
I, you know, I am all for increasing all of this, but again, I'm going to sit here and say that we need to look at teacher increases too. And I hope that you are looking at that because we have across the board, our district, that we need to start moving forward.
Philip and I have been looking at teacher salaries. And we have a meeting this week.
They need to have a pay increase. It's been, what?
It's been too long.
Two years? How long has it been? Two years since they had any increases? Okay. All right. Any other questions of Patrick? Cora?
Philip, I mean, that's two different pay rates. Are you going to be okay with that? I mean, shadowing what Stephen said, now adding a third one, looking at teachers.
We definitely can cover this for the rest of this fiscal year. I'll have to account for it when we adopt the budget for next year. Because we're already, we're over 50% through this fiscal year. And we're exactly at 50%, so we can cover this for the rest of the fiscal year. But we'll definitely have to adjust, like I said, when we adopt the budget for next year.
Ms. Cora.
It is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the CDL school bus driver pay rate as presented, effective March 6, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Cora. Do we have a, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Give him seconds. Any other comments or questions? I know it's not a whole lot, but it's better than nothing. They deserve it. Any questions? Okay. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we go into a report, Budget Development Calendar. I'm sure everyone saw that. That's a very unique thing to have there.
All right. This is the type of organization I have used in the past for developing the annual budget. And you will see on the left-hand side, I have the dates and the times, starting with tonight's board meeting where you're actually seeing the calendar. And as long as I'm here, we will continue each month to go through and make sure that we can check off that we have accomplished these tasks. Tomorrow, I will be sending out notice of this calendar to all the campuses and directors. And then we will have a cabinet meeting, which is the people within this building who have leadership roles, to review the budget calendar, staffing, salaries, and stipends. And then on March 15th, the leadership team meeting is going to roll up our sleeves and really look at money, master schedules, and hand out budget packets. We're going to review salary charts and stipends. And then March 21st, when we have our board meeting, we will show the board our salary charts and stipends. That's the first discussion. And then that's when we approve of teachers, librarians, counselors, and RNs contracts. April 18th, board meeting is during intercession, but we'll be here to talk about the budget process with departments and campuses, first discussion, and salary charts and stipends, second discussion. So you will have time for input on this as well. Something that is different about this is we're going to ask purchase... Yeah, I need some water. Sorry. And deadline for proposed budgets from the departments and campuses, we turn it April 25th, so we have time to work on them. And then purchase orders slow down and stop May 13th. Thank you. So as you can see, there's quite a bit of work to be done with the budget.
So definitely, to answer you, we're really going to look at, you know, I'm basically saying, you know, there will be raises. I can't tell you how much they're going to be or what they'll be, but we're definitely going to really look at this and try to, same thing that we do for everything else, we got to stay, try to stay committed to it. We got to try to maximize our budget. Our biggest expense is our payroll. So we just got to make sure that we're leaning mean everywhere else so we can maximize our salaries. And that's what we're going to do.
So it's a step-by-step process, ending with adopting the budget, the tax rate, before we are required to do it for August 31st?
That's good.
And Philip had input into this too. It wasn't just me.
No.
But I've used this chart successfully in other districts. And it's a report, I don't think no question.
And it's a living, breathing document, so as we go along, we'll check out, like Ms. Cora said, we'll check out things, and we'll change it up and make sure we get everything done. And like I said, it's not, it's not set in stone. It's just a process that we're going to work through.
I just have a concern about the April 18th during intercession. That's a pretty popular intercession. Is that going to impede on anyone's plans?
Or would you like to have a meeting a week early? We're okay with that?
It's up to the board. I think there's already a meeting, I had on April 21st.
Yeah.
Superintendent's process. It'd be two meetings up.
Yeah. During intercession. Especially everybody having to come back together. Does that mean it'll be March 21st and then the 11th of April?
Right. If we moved it up a week, it would be the 11th.
Yeah.
And that's something definitely, like I said, this is not set in stone. I guess maybe as y'all get more into the superintendent search and know exactly what you're going to do, we can definitely modify it to fit when y'all want it to be.
Okay.
Because during intercession, your vote on the, if we had the meeting on April 18th, on April 21st, which is Thursday.
Yeah.
It's a, board votes to hire the superintendent.
Yeah. Those are two, that's what we're looking at. Those are two things during intercession.
So if you'd rather have April the 11th, we're good with that.
Is your, it's the regular board meeting?
Ms. Cora had mentioned at, when she was planning about moving it, but typically, we've never moved a board meeting, even though it's during intercession time. The only time we've ever moved a meeting was when the districts absolutely closed during Christmas break. So she did, she did ask, and we told her we typically still have them during intercession.
In this case, you know, with all the parents and teachers and everybody included, I think it would be better to move it back a week. That gives everyone enough time to do what they need to do, correct?
So, but hold on. When is the 21st then? How old is Dave?
It is the week of intercession.
I feel we're coming back either way for TSB, but we're going to move the board meeting.
Well, that can be moved as well.
Because generally, it's the third Monday of the month. So it's just information.
Okay.
And like I said, it's a living, breathing document. We'll keep it updated as we progress through the process.
I'm excited to see y'all working on this. Thank you.
Yes, special teacher salaries.
Start it early.
Yep. Now we get to the special ed, item number 12. It's a report, special education.
Good evening. I'm going to talk a little bit about special ed today, the world of special ed on the first slide. There, those are some of the things that have to do with our program, inclusion, collaboration, transition, ECI. So these are some terms that we use in special ed. There are so many acronyms, so I tried not to use too many acronyms because that's one thing that we see a lot of in special ed. But that is, that's what the first slide is. It's just different things that we do or that we offer in the special education. The following slide is, these are immediate, these are department staffs. So we have myself, we have an administrative assistant, two clerks, 4.5 diagnosticians, three speech-language pathologists, three assistants, speech-language assistants. And on there, I apologize, I meant to put behavior specialist on that. And then we have one special ed counselor, and then it should have said transition coordinator. Then we have, this is what we have throughout the district. These are our staff that are housed on the campuses. Oh, and just so, I will tell you that we do have a diag at each campus as well. The speech pathologists, we have some at some campuses, and then others that travel throughout the district. And then we have our campus staff here. We do have a vision teacher. She also does homebound. And then we have the PaaS program, which is what you would formerly have heard of as behavior, but we are using more of a positive approach. Last year, the staff was trained in that. It's using more of a positive approach. I know that you were asking, you were asking Dr. White about some of the special ed things in there. One of those components to that accountability report that he was referring to has to do with keeping the students in the classroom. If they have behavior issues, when we pull out special ed students too much, that hurts us on our accountability. So that's why we're trying to use a positive approach to behaviors versus a negative, oh, you're in trouble, we're going to put you over there. It's how can, what can we do to help you with behaviors? And then, so we have one on each campus, and then we have a paraprofessional on one of the campuses has to. And we have our early childhood class, and that one is a one teacher and two parents. And then we have the adaptive ed classroom, seven teachers throughout the district, 16 paraprofessionals, and the inclusion, 15, and then 11. And so, just so you know, these numbers change throughout the year, just like Philip and I met, what was it, two weeks ago, or a week and a half ago? And we met to look at the staffing and to look at all the needs of the special ed. We went over our entire budget, federal and local, to see what, where we were at and what we needed to do to ensure that we were meeting the needs of all of our students. And the next one is the, we, these are the contracted services. So we contract the licensed school, licensed specialist school psychologist, and then, and we contract out for occupational therapy, physical therapy, and orientation and mobility. And this is not uncommon for most of the districts because these are hard to find. It's very difficult to find these. I have been looking for people because we have a lot of testing right now, and I've been looking for extra people, and it's tough trying to find. They're busy, like, every district, we're competing with all of the districts for these.
They come through a co-op type deal? The LS, the occupational therapist, physical therapist, they come through like...
It's typically, they own, like, their own business, and then they have, they contract out with the districts. Some of them, yeah, it's, it's, some of them that I have found, because I've been calling recently, looking, and there's some that, like, there was one that she said, well, I work for this district, but I'm willing to contract out during spring break. So we're all looking and trying to find, and we're just helping each other as much as we can. I'm talking about all the districts in the region. These are our students. Right now, we have a total, we have, and this number fluctuates constantly. Right now, we have 358 students. 74 of them receive speech services, 70 receive occupational therapy, 22 physical therapy, 70 receive occupational therapy, 22 physical therapy, four receive the orientation and mobility, seven receive vision, and then 24 receive counseling. So again, these numbers fluctuate throughout the year because we have ARD meetings and some students need some services. Some students no longer need certain services. So those, that's what we have at this time.
Ms. I'm so sorry, but what is, and I might've, you might've said it because I heard we're talking about occupational therapists. But I was trying to catch up. I'm not gonna kid you. And I was a little, what is LSP stand for?
That's a licensed specialist school psychologist. Yes, and I did. So that, those are the ones that test students. They test students for autism, emotional disabilities, because then we have our diagnosticians and those test more. They test for learning disabilities. They can test for intellectual disabilities, but they cannot test for autism or emotional disabilities.
Yeah, because I didn't, yeah, I didn't see them up here in that first slide. So I was kinda, I wasn't sure where.
That, it's on our contracted services.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, I'm, I get you. Okay. And since he stopped you, I'm gonna ask you, since you mentioned that you had met with Philip and y'all had talked about budgets in the federal, are we gonna be able to regain that federal money that we sent back because we didn't use last year?
It's local money.
It's, it's local money because the maintenance of effort, we're making every effort to do that. I'm just, it's the same situation that's happened the last two years with COVID. I mean, we have staff, we have more vacancies, we have more, we just, we don't have as many expenditures just because we don't have, we don't have the staff fully staffed all year long. But we're making every effort to reverse that maintenance of effort issue. We do have, we do have significant federal funds. I mean, the maintenance of effort only affects your local funds. You have to maintain your local effort. That's what caused us to send that money back. But we do have significant federal funds and we just got an additional, I wanna say 200 and something thousand federal funds related to COVID. Related to, I forget the magic word they use, but it's.
It was for like the COVID.
Yeah, helping, helping.
You have to spend it, what? You were gonna say we have to spend that?
Well, it's just, it's more money that, it's more money that we didn't have before.
With maintenance of effort, the way that it works is you have to spend the same amount. Like say that we have a budget of 200,000. We have to spend 200,000 or 201,000 the following year. If you don't spend it, then you have to send that money back or you better have a good reason for not spending it. We, and sometimes it seems like that's not even working anymore. But what happens is we have our budget, but then we have our budget for salaries. Right now, I'm gonna tell you, there are no teachers. Like we are, by the time that we call them, somebody already hired them. There, so let's just say a teacher leaves at the middle of the year and let's just say the teacher makes 50,000. Right there, that's 50,000 out of your local, out of your special ed budget that you gotta figure out. Like if you don't find a person, every month that that salary's not being paid, that's, that's maintenance of effort. That's why it's so challenging to meet the maintenance, because then you have your federal funds and you have to spend those too. And like he said, they gave us more. So we are definitely, you know, we, we're purchasing whatever the students need. But the biggest budget of, of any department, even of the district, is salaries. And if a student, if somebody leaves and we don't find somebody right away, then that's every month that that paycheck is supposed to be paid. That's, that's what happens a lot with maintenance of effort. So we have to try to stay on top of that. But it's, it's difficult because right now there are no teachers. I mean, everybody's saying that. And there are no general ed teachers and there really are no special ed teachers.
Well, I commend y'all because this says right here that you have 358 students. And with the staff numbers that I'm seeing, I'm commending y'all. If y'all, if y'all are handling that many students, y'all are doing a great job.
We're trying. And we do have some openings that we have not been able to fill.
Do you remember we, we did an amendment where we're buying a specialty bus out of the local budget this year to help meet the maintenance of effort? It's ours. We ordered it. It should be.
Try to get creative. So we're gonna send it back.
It should be here. It will be here before the end of the year, so. Sorry, I threw you off course.
No, no, that's okay. That's okay. Professional development, these are some of the areas that we receive professional development. A little further in the slides, you'll see that we had to do a self-assessment. And one of the areas that we, and this was a requirement that we felt that, we noticed that we needed more was professional development. So we've been trying to ensure that our staff receives more professional development to meet the needs of all of our students. The following slide is some of the things that we're doing to address the learning gaps. I know that was mentioned earlier and we're very well aware that our students have a lot of gaps. Online does not work for our students. It just, it doesn't. So it doesn't work for a general ed student, much less a special ed student. It just, it's, but I mean, you do, you did, we did what we had to do during COVID, but now we're really working hard and the campuses are working hard to try to meet the needs of our students to fill the gaps. So these are just some of the things here that, in the programs that were, that are being incorporated on the campuses and then some of the things that the camps are doing during intervention times. And, and then some of the strategies, because I reached out to some of the teachers, like what are some of the things that you were doing? And, and they were talking about how they're using more graphic organizers, they're using the spiraling skills and some of the things that they're doing. So that, the strategies are coming from what teachers are doing, special ed teachers. Then we have, okay, so I wanted to bring this out because these, there's a lot of things that, in special ed world, there is a lot of compliance components. And this is one of the areas that we had to create operational guidelines. We had to create them from scratch. So in the area of, and you can, I put the thing there, it's legal framework website. It's in Region 18. And when you click that, you go to Region, it, it will take you to Region 18 and then you just type in Telosomidway and you'll see them. But what my staff doesn't know, because I haven't told them, is that I go, I went to a director meeting on Thursday and I'll show you all the ones that we put together and they run anywhere from three to 17 pages and they're getting ready to wipe them out. We gotta start over. That's the world of special ed. So now we're gonna have, they're gonna, we don't know yet. They'll let us know and, so anyway, these are the guidelines that we put together for, that's the child find. And then here is FATE. And again, each of these is an area and these were guidelines that, like I said, can run from three to 18 pages long. My staff did an excellent job. What we did is it was, we worked together and we were, we would get together and to come up with it. And everybody was assigned something and then we kinda met and we, we worked on them to make them. I have an awesome team and they work very, very well together. So that's how we were able to get these. And I will tell you, we were one of the first districts that completed these and other districts were asking for our assistance. Okay, so this is the FATE. And then these are the evaluation guidelines that we put together. And I think there's one more evaluation. So again, we did all this work and they're getting ready to wipe it out and we will have to put more. I don't know what, they'll let us know. What it is, is they ask you a list of questions and you have to make sure that all that is incorporated in your guidelines. Okay. So then, this was a self-assessment that I was referring to. These are the areas that we, that we did and we will have to, in May, this will come up where we have to assess special ed in general with these areas. And we'll get, we'll have committees where we get together with the campuses and we discuss these to see what are the areas. It's basically what can we do to improve our program? And these are the areas we'll be looking at. Okay. This here, our legis, this is another part of special ed. It's a compliance component that is huge and it changes all the time. This is just this here. There's a couple of slides. These are the legislative changes or updates in special ed. There's multiple Senate bills there that have, that have been, I guess, created or whatever for special ed. So then our job is to get with the campuses and make sure that, or if it's ours, like assessment, then to make sure, to ensure that we're, that we're doing this. It doesn't necessarily mean like we're gonna go to campus, say, oh, by the way, it's Senate Bill 89, whatever. It's whatever is in the Senate bill, we gotta make sure it's happening. And then the House bills and then the dyslexic operating guidelines change because now dyslexia is going to fall under special ed. So we will be doing the testing. It just started. The handbook has changed and now it will be, the testing will have, it's gonna have to be done by special ed now. Of course, the dyslexia teachers, I would tell you, they're awesome and they're gonna, we're gonna work together. But I mean, there's only so much testing that they can do. And then some of these are other things that change. Graduation codes, the justifications for Stahl, the results-driven accountability. Then we had to complete a strategic, ah, strategic support plan. And then these are more updates or changes. So they're either updates or changes. I think I counted and this is just this year, there's about 30. And we're not even done with the year. And like I said, they threw it at us. They're changing our operational guidelines. So there could be more. That's just the way special ed is. And then I wanted to end on a good note. So we're super excited because we are finally able to participate in the Special Olympics. So we hadn't been able to for the last few years due to COVID. And so we're really excited that we're able to do this. We weren't able to attend the bowling competition with the rest of the districts because what they did is we were not gonna have Special Olympics. And then they said, we're gonna have it, but they're cramming everything into this semester. And because we had our intercession in, in October, I think it was, and then we didn't have enough time to go meet, to go do our practice sessions to be able, to be ready for competition. So we decided to host our own because we didn't want our students to not be able to participate. So we wanted them to have that experience. And I don't know if some of y'all saw, we were on the news. And so the students were super excited. So these are some of the other competitions that are gonna be taking place and our students will be participating in them. And we're really excited because we're finally able to purchase new uniforms. We, it had already been approved to purchase new uniforms a couple of years ago and then COVID happened and we were unable to do that. So that's what we're working on this year. And also now, this was the first time also that there's some TM gear that's available for parents for special ed, this, for Special Olympics. And that's something, and nobody's making any money off of it. It's just, it, it, we're not making any money. It's just so whoever wants to order can. It's not like an actual fundraiser where we're making money off of it.
So our athletic department can't provide our special ed athletes with uniforms to wear at their competitions?
Well, we're purchasing them. We have a budget. We have a budget for that. Our department has a budget.
We just waited. I mean, we, we didn't have the kids to get the uniforms for it because of COVID. But now we are gonna go ahead and do that because we do have it.
Yeah. And there's a budget because we have to pay fees for all the competitions and everything. And then if, like if they go to state or whatever, there's fees. There's a budget for that. That's another area that was affected by COVID because that's money that wasn't being spent. So there's your maintenance of effort because those are local funds.
Yeah, they need uniforms. That's.
Absolutely. I agree.
Special, same thing. We, the money that we use, anybody that advances to beyond what we call beyond district, Special Olympics is, is right there. So if anybody qualifies and we're able, and usually the parents will take the kids, but we, we will, we will provide for the rooms and we'll, and we'll, we'll find, just like we would for any other program if they advance further.
But the basketball and the track and field, all this is gonna be competition, not just, not just amongst ourselves.
They just admitted the, the, what I did is I set up a group, like a group meeting for the coaches so that I'm in, and I'm in it and we're keeping in touch. And I saw on there that they had just submitted the bowling scores for the competitions. I mean, I'm sorry, the basketball.
Basketball.
Thank you for a great report. I just had one. Can you tell me how y'all initiate the child find?
Oh, the child find, yes. And that, that's gonna be on the board policy.
Oh, okay.
Now, child find is basically if we put out posters and like I also went to the Arlington Heights and I met with them. If there's, if there's any students that they feel that need our services. And we also work with ECI and that was what's gonna be coming up next with the policy. But we make sure that we, that we communicate with them regularly and the headstarts as well. If it's, if they see, like if a parent comes and we kinda see, like if they see that the child, they have a child that looks like they might need our services, then we'll reach out.
And what age does that start?
We start servicing students at three.
Three, okay. Thank you.
Very good. Very good report. Hey, positive. I'm glad to see that y'all are able to get back into some of the things that the kids enjoy. I know the people who are involved with them, coaches and everything, they have a good time. I saw the bowling. That was exciting. You can see it on their faces and everything. That was, that was outstanding. I, I enjoyed that. And you're doing great things. Just keep it up. Keep improvement in the state, though.
Yeah, the state always puts, it's okay, though. We get through it. Like I said, I have an awesome team.
You have a good team.
We're all together. Absolutely.
Very good. Very good. Proud of you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
She's gonna go ahead and give us the informational policy.
Yes, yes.
The next one?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So the next one you have in your board packets, there are two local policies that, again, they, the board of, that need to, well, they're, where I'm recommending be adopted by the board trustees. It's the EHBAA local. That's a straight requirement for the early childhood intervention. That's the ECI program. And so we already do this, but now they're making it a policy. And it's basically saying that we, we test them before they turn three. And I would tell you, during my, during COVID, my staff got very creative with these kids because this is something that we have to, this is an accountability thing. Like it's, if we, if we don't do this, then we're out of compliance. And we were in compliance with this because they were doing it through Zoom. They were meeting the parents through Zoom. They were doing whatever they needed to do to make sure that we met with the parents. But, and we have to test the child before they're three years old and have them in a program by the time that they're three. So that's the first policy, the EHBAA. And then the EHBA local is, it's stating that the district will provide training opportunities for the students who have dyslexia. And that's a new policy this, with regards to that. Any questions?
I think this is a good thing. I know policies are good. It's the first reading, so I'll have to come back for the second for a vote. But I'm sure that you'll add some more stuff to it, Craig. Yeah, as you go along. Because that's, we need something like this for all, make sure you take care of all those children out there.
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 14 is District of Innovation. I'd like to know who has that.
Yeah, I say, I'm back again, guys. Okay. Just to give a quick update on where we are at planning-wise with the District of Innovation Plan. Last week, we met as a committee over Zoom and we rolled out the five exemptions that were a part of the survey results that we had shared with you all back in first semester. And at this point, last Tuesday was when the work began with the committees. And they are currently, right now, writing through their plan according to the exemption that they were assigned. And so right now, that is part of the rough draft process that they're going under. Originally, the date for their rough draft was due when?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, which we all thought, we all thought was a one, a little too soon, right? So we decided to kick back the date, give everybody about another week or so to write. And so everything will be due on Sunday. And so at that point, what we will do is, as a cabinet team, we will begin reviewing after Sunday what's been submitted. And then it becomes a kind of back and forth to determine exactly where they are at and where we are at as an administrative team so that once it goes back to the committee for a final review and kinda finalizing the rough draft to a final draft, then it becomes from there, we will review with our legal team, allow you all the opportunity to review what's being submitted. And then that will kickstart the 30-day process for posting online. And then at that point, after the 30 days, we can then move forward with one of two approvals. The first approval being the District of Innovation Planning Committee will have to do. to do a public hearing and allow the committee at that point to hear from them, and then if they are good, they will make the approval, and then at that point, their approval goes to the board, and that will be at that point for y'all's final approval. And so, um, we're hoping that in the next month or so, um, we can knock all this out, um, but again, this is a kind of a journey, and as you guys have kind of been on the journey with us, um, we're kinda just taking it week by week, just to kinda make sure that everything is um, you know, appropriate time-wise and that everybody is understanding of where we are at, so that we're not leaving anybody behind and things like that. So um, we're excited because we finally have started the process, now it's just a matter of getting everybody through to the final rough draft phase, that, at that point, like I said, uh, the cabinet team will kinda take over, and then we'll go back and forth, and then eventually you all will be included, and then that kind of will wrap things up for uh, becoming a District of Innovation.
I commend the team also for getting together, because originally, or traditionally, this group has met and taken a half a day off from school. Well, when we started talking about that, we said, but there's no subs. And so we said, let's just halt that, let's meet after school on Zoom, where everybody can, you know, stop what they're doing after school and uh, attend a Zoom for about fifteen minutes, get some instruction, and then we'll come back together. So I really thank the members of that team, uh, because what you're doing is very important, and uh, we would love to have you half a day, but, because that's, you know, working together really makes a big difference on this, but we're just simply not able to do it because we don't have subs. This is a report, I'm.
Yeah, this is, it's good that people are willing to work around it and help with the process, and that, that's greatly appreciated, because this is an important thing for our district to consider and everything, and it takes a lot of work and effort, and I know everyone is doing their diligence to make it happen, but it's a process that has to be gone through to make sure it's right, jotting the Ts and crossing the Us and all that good stuff, making sure, okay, jotting Us, crossing Ts, okay. Go back to the teacher, item number fifteen?
Yep, so more crossing of the Ts.
This is new.
Crossing of the Ts.
For us.
This is new.
This has been going on in the state for a couple of years, and each district had to determine when they were gonna jump in, because it's a lot of details to it, but it is one way of giving teachers races.
So for the third and final time, I will be presenting uh, to you all a report, um, initial overview of the teacher incentive allotment, and like what Ms. Sefora just said, um, we're very excited about this program, this opportunity, because um, separate from budget talks and things like that, this is a brand-new funding source that um, we get to tap into, um, and as far as just walking you all through what this process looks like, like I said, um, as soon as we wrap up District of Innovation, we will slide right into teacher incentive allotment, and that will be the new initiative for the district. And so just real quickly, uh, tonight's uh, presentation will just cover the overview, some of the elements of the program design, how the allotment funding works, some of the essential factors we need to be mindful of, and then of course, our timelines and next steps. What I want to do real quick is to play a quick three-minute video that really does a good job of summarizing just about um, everything involved with the, uh, the program.
The teacher incentive allotment was established by House Bill Three during the eighty-sixth legislature and is designed to give Texas teachers access to.
Well, I'm sorry about that.
The teacher incentive allotment was established by House Bill Three during the eighty-sixth legislature and is designed to give Texas teachers access to a six-figure salary. The program's goal is to reward, retain, and recruit effective teachers while promoting equitable distribution of these teachers. Teachers are eligible to generate allotment funds for their district based on their performance. Participating districts can designate a teacher as recognized, exemplary, or master based on teacher observation, student growth, or other factors determined by the district. Teachers can also reach recognized status by obtaining a national board certification. Once a designation is achieved, it lasts for five years or until their national board certification expires. Annual funding allotments are based on designations, rural status of the campus, and level of student economic need. A district will receive a TIA allotment between three thousand dollars and thirty-two thousand dollars for each employed designated teacher. Higher funding is generated for rural and high-needs campuses. A teacher's designation will move with them if they decide to work in another district. If the teacher meets eligibility requirements at their new district, then the funds generated will be awarded to the new district during the next year's allotment cycle. Districts who want to be approved for a local teacher designation system will need to develop and implement a system based on teacher observation and student growth measures. The Texas Education Agency approves district systems based on their validity and reliability. Approval of a local designation system is a two-step process over the course of three school years. The district should develop their system through stakeholder engagement, solidifying the components of their system, and aligning their system to performance standards. When the district has solidified their system, they will then submit their system application to TEA for review. This is known as step one of the approval process. Upon approval of their application, they will begin their data capture year. This year represents the first year districts are implementing their system and capturing the teacher observation and student growth data. This year also represents a district's cohort letter. For example, the first data capture year was twenty-eighteen to twenty-nineteen and represents cohort A. After capturing their data in the data capture year, in the following school year, the district will complete step two of the approval process by submitting data from the previous school year along with their proposed designations to Texas Tech University for data validation. TEA will then review the outcomes of the data validation and the application to determine final approval. If approved, the district will be approved to issue designations. Designated teachers who are employed by the district and meet eligibility requirements will generate an allotment for their district. Ninety percent of the funds generated must be used for compensation of teachers employed at the campus where the designated teacher works. Up to ten percent of funds can be used for costs associated with supporting a local designation system or to support teachers in obtaining designations. Learn how to reward, retain, and recruit effective teachers at your district by visiting our website, tiatexas.org.
This is a quick, quick overview, there is a lot to this. Okay, so to keep it simple, there are two ways a teacher can earn a designation. One way was through the local designation, designation system that the LEA, the district has to create, and then the other way is the national board certification. So essentially, the local teacher designation system is comprised of two parts, one of, one of which is the teacher observation, which being that we are a T-test appraisal district, that would be the instrument we would use, and um, part of the video that you had heard was uh, the calibration period where we do a data capture, to ensure that as we are evaluating, that that is um, something that is being done fair and equitably across the board for all teachers in the district. Um, and so that will be something that we partner with, um, and get some help on to ensure, like I said, that there's validity through that process. The second component is the student performance, and again, that is a school district decision, um, and again, very similar to uh, the District of Innovation Planning Committee, there will be committee work being done through this process to help us uh, come up with the best student performance uh, measures that um, we all feel reflect not only the quality of our teaching, but the quality of the student learning. Um, as I kinda mentioned just before, um, part of uh, the partnership with Texas Tech will help us ensure that through our data collection, that there is validity to that process. And all districts that undergo the TIA will, will have the same partnership with Texas Tech. And so um, the state so far has done a pretty good job of pushing out some very helpful documents to help us with the planning process, and one of these documents is the TIA readiness checklist, and so just through this checklist, um, you can see here that these are the main components, and then within um, each of those components, there is a very nice detailed guidebook that TA has uh, given us to help us through this process, since it is a bit complex and it's a multi-year process. Back to the national board certification, again, um, this is not something that can just be done in a weekend or over intercession, uh, this is a, again, multi-year process for teachers that are interested in taking this on. Um, you can see here that they must demonstrate advanced knowledge, skills, and practice in individual certificate areas by completing four components, three portfolio entries, and a computer-based assessment. So it is quite rigorous and involved. Um, but again, those who can go through that and come out alive with the certificate, um, they automatically qualify for being at the recognized designation, so they're automatically there, they can obtain this certificate. And part of um, us as a district and working through the committee process will be to determine if uh, we as a district wanna support that initiative. Okay, so, onto the money. So how does the allotment get calculated for TM, okay? For everybody, the allotment works like this, the allotment is uh, composed of the base plus times the multiplier times the average student point value. This is where our PENDOS uh, really kicks in. Um, and so as we're looking at this, you can kinda see just the base numbers that we are working with. The key factor as far as what will drive up the funding is the economic disadvantaged status of our students. Again, students at rural schools are assigned to a tier that is two tiers higher than their assigned comp ed tier, and so kinda like what we learned a little bit in uh, Philip's uh, budget audit, um, there are tiers for economically disadvantaged students based on their level of um, poverty, and so those students that are in a higher state but also reside at a rural school, they will count twice. And so you can see that the state is really pushing the incentive to work at some of our higher needs campuses, and if you do and have a good impact on students, you will, you will receive more funding, you'll receive more money. And so at the time of us taking uh, this snapshot that I'm about to show you, you can kinda get a sense of where we are as a district, tier two is where the majority of our students fell, and you can see here on this slide is the snapshot breakdown of all of our students by campus, um, by tier. And so you can kinda get a sense of where our numbers fall, which campuses have higher tiers, and also a grand total of where our economically disadvantaged students are, which grand total, we have two thousand three hundred and seventy-six. And again, the base, you would add that to the multiplied multiplier times average student point value, and then that ends up giving you the number that helps drive the funding cost for the teacher. And so again, there are three different uh, designations. For us in particular here, you can see the breakdown by designation for recognized, it's between four thousand six hundred and thirty-two and seven thousand six hundred and thirty-seven, uh, out of a max of nine thousand. And so um, a teacher in that area, the highest they could get would be seven thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and the same follows for exemplary and of course uh, for master. So how does the breakdown of the funding work on the campuses, okay? Remember that they um, they uh, put a lot of play into the designation status of being a rural campus, and so we do have one, our rural campus is ACC, and so you can see that the designation status allotment there is much more than it would be at some of our other campuses. Not to say that the other campuses wouldn't receive as much, but you know, if you're working with um, high-need students and you feel very confident in your abilities and that's a passion of yours, that is incentive for you to not only wanna work at a challenging campus, but to stay there, because as we know, half the battle is recruiting and getting them here, then the other half is being able to retain them, and while growing them and keeping them so that, you know, we're not constantly having to go through that same process over and over and over again. Uh, I can recall back to a, a prior board meeting with uh, Ms. McLaren mentioning how it took her forever to find a science teacher, um, because one, once again, science is hard, but in particular at a higher needs campus, it's even, it's even harder. However, having this TIA funding as a kind of um, promotion-type advertising piece, that's going to attract a lot of highly qualified teachers who know that if I come and do what I'm good at, I will, you know, reap the benefit of that.
And this'll, this could change.
Absolutely, this is, this was just at the time.
This is gonna fluctuate depending on.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the students on the campuses.
Absolutely, and what I'm showing you right now is just a snapshot from twenty-twenty. And so just to kinda summarize everything for you all on this slide, again, um, the big key driving piece here for the TIA will be developing a local designation system, then it becomes a matter of understanding the additional funding that we will be receiving, and then understanding, again, how that funding will be distributed and how that works on rural or higher needs campuses. Um, and again, a, at least ninety percent of the funds must be spent on teacher compensation, meaning only for teachers, not administrators, not anybody else, but only teachers. And then the other ten percent is up to the district to decide how they wanna go ahead and use those funds. Typically, I've seen those funds used with um, third-party consultants as they help support us through the implementation process. And then of course, um, kind of a nuance here is the partnership with Texas Tech as they work with us to help us calibrate our data to ensure validity for um, for all teachers. And then just to let everybody know, as the video said, it began with cohort A in eighteen nineteen as part of the House Bill Three measure, um, we are a part of cohort F, which puts us at data caption year twenty-three, twenty-four, um, and so that'll be a big year for us to really make sure that T-tests, our appraiser, appraisals, um, not only are we following the, the cycle the way we need to, but um, there is calibration to that process, as in if I go in or an assistant principal or another campus principal were to go in and see that same teacher, how close are we in our evaluation? Am I just way over here giving all fives? Is this assistant principal over here, or, you know, just giving all twos and all ones? That's the case, then we've got some calibration that we need to do. And so that'll be a big driving piece as we kinda get the application kickstarted, and that will take us into, like I said, the twenty-three, twenty-four year, which will be a big year as far as the, the TIA uh, plan is concerned. However, as we kinda move along into uh, the better part of this decade, as you can see, um, it goes into twenty-four and twenty-five, with the September of twenty-twenty-five being the official month that teachers would begin receiving uh, payment from the, from the program. But we have to start now so that we can stay on track. So that's kinda the reason why we are presenting tonight, to let you all know that this is something that is coming very soon, um, and we're excited, because we definitely um, will benefit from it, and um, we just know that going through this process, making sure, again, through the committee uh, process, teachers be included, um, we've got their voice to make sure that whatever we end up deciding is a true reflection of what they expect to see, based on the work that they do in the classroom. So, last slide, um, sorry, last slide, just to kinda give you all um, a, a quick glance at some of the other school districts in the region who are kinda undergoing this process currently, um, you can kinda see right here some of the districts that are a little bit further along, but that's okay, um, we'll get there soon enough.
Dr. Horn, I'm sorry, but I guess I got lost somewhere in the, in all of this. Okay, when it started off, I was in the understanding that the teacher went through certifications, and they were applying for this allotment.
So there are two ways to earn the teacher incentive allotment funding. One way would be through their local designation system that we create, we haven't done anything yet, but that would be part of our task, we create that, and the state also offers the national board certification pathway. We as a district can support that, or we can just simply say, here teachers, here's uh, another way for you all to um, earn allotment funding, but you gotta take this on, and it's a one-to-three-year process, and it's. but you got to take this on and it's a one- to three-year process and it's quite complicated.
Right, so the allotment goes to the teacher that takes on the project. Because then we switch to the word district. And now that says rural applications accepted. And I'm seeing the districts again. So if this money that, say like, for example, ACC had a $27,000 where everybody else had seven, nine and down. So what you're saying is that the district would go into a budget for Philip to spread out throughout the teachers? Or does that one teacher that?
That one teacher gets that money.
Gets the $27,000.
If they were to max out and do everything perfect, that would be the max allotment for that teacher if they were on the ACC campus.
Okay.
And that's all state determined.
No, like I said, you started throwing up the districts. And I was like, who's getting this money?
The district creates the plan. The teachers receive the allotment. All this money does not come from us, it comes from the state.
It sounds like a win-win to me.
It is a win.
The students, teachers, and the district.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that teacher that went through all the extra.
It is a lot of work.
I want to make sure they're the ones that are getting that money.
And Texas Tech is the one that will determine who is going to receive that money, not the local group, because there are certain standards that have been set and it's an equal playing field for everybody.
So we go through Texas State, we don't go through the National Boards, is what you're saying, right?
Well, what she's saying is that the district and the committee and the groups on that committee, we get to kind of pick and choose how we want to implement the TIA. The Texas Tech partnership helps us calibrate evaluation data so that as we are putting our plan together, our data is reliable. It's valid. We're not being unfair to say, well, at the high school, everybody's getting fives over there, so every teacher's going to be able to get a maxed-out payment because, well, their APs are easier graders and that just so happened to be lucky for them. Whereas at the primary campus, they got a bunch of really tough graders and their administrators, and everyone's making ones and twos. Well, if that's the case, we have a calibration problem, meaning Texas Tech has partnered with us to help us through that to ensure that we don't have that problem. That's why they're there. So they're in support of us implementing a local designation system that we, through our committee, will create based on the guidelines given to us by TA.
This is all for everybody's information.
If we were to receive, if we were to hire a teacher from Orange Grove that was already making that money, we're obligated to pay that money.
Yes, they take it with them, which is what the video says.
What we get at other schools that have been awarded that, when that teacher moves, whatever district they move to, the money moves with them.
It comes through the financial system to the teacher. You can't just, here's your check, teacher. No, it comes through the financial system, then gets put into her pay.
This is great.
And like you said, this is a win-win. We're very, very excited about this. It's been kind of putting some feelers out. I think some people are aware that we're moving this direction, but once we get the word out and really begin promoting our ability to begin this process, I definitely think it's just another little piece we get to use to help us in recruiting and retaining and just showcasing to the community and to everybody in the district that we have a long-term plan for not only giving raises, but supporting excellent teaching. And that's it, at least for tonight.
Very good, thank you. That was very good information. I like the idea. I'm sure teachers, which like you say, once the word gets out, they'll be ready. That is a good thing, very good thing. Thank you very much.
Can we ask for just a slight break?
Well, we can have a slight break, but if you're going to do the five minutes, press the board, five-minute recess. Okay? Okay, it is 9:49 PM. February 21st, 2022, we're in recess. Okay, it is 10:00 PM. February 21st, 2022, we're back from recess. Back in form, let's see, we're going on to discussing consent or second reading of TASB policies 118 local, which we went through, had an opportunity to look through. There is something that Mr. Corr has to bring to our attention.
Okay, I'm supporting that we adopt this update with two exceptions. One is policy DP local. Principal qualifications, may remember last month, Anna suggested, and we all agreed, I think, three years' experience as a classroom teacher for a principal, before you could be a principal. So DP would be revised in that way. And then we have policy EHAA local, which has to do with human sexuality instruction. And this has to do with the School Health Advisory Council meeting and having two public meetings and hearings about the curriculum materials. And what we have learned over time is to wait on those materials. We do not have access to all of the materials that are available. We've only had one program come to our meeting. And so I'm going to pull EHAA because we're not there yet. It says the board shall adopt a resolution convening the district's school shack to recommend curriculum materials for the instruction. We have, number two, we have held two public meetings, but we haven't discussed all of the curriculum materials before adopting and presenting them to the board. And number three, the shack recommendations must comply with the instructional content requirements in law and be suitable to the subject and grade level. And number four, the shack should present its recommendations to the board at a public meeting. And number five, after the board ensures the recommendations from the shack meet the standards in law, the board shall take action and the recommendations by a record vote at a public meeting. So we're not there yet. So I'm going to ask that we pull EHAA.
So that's DP local and EHAA local will be, well, the revisions for the personal position, which will be forthcoming. And then the shack committee EHAA will be pulled for completion.
Further development.
Yeah, further development. Is that okay with everyone? I think we all, you didn't get this either for the first reading. So there's some more catch-up you have to do.
Is this in the meeting there, Mrs. Will?
Uh huh. So this is the second reading and this is where we take an adoption on it, Dr. Corr.
Okay, so the recommendation is that we adopt Tasby Policy Update 118 as presented with a revising DP local to say three years' experience as a classroom teacher for a principal qualifications. And that we hold EHAA for further development.
Okay, now you'll bring back the revision. We're going to go ahead and put the one for that, DP.
Well.
We'll revise it first.
Well, we can, it already had it in there, they just marked it out.
Okay. We're going to put it back in, right?
Yes, we're going to put it back in.
Okay, so those, we're going to exclude those two, right?
Well, we're revising DP and we're excluding EHAA.
Okay. Everybody got that? So the rest of you, so is there a recommendation, Mr. Corr?
Okay, I recommend that we approve Tasby Update Policy 118 as presented with revising DP local on the line where it says the principal qualifications are three years' experience as a classroom teacher. And we're excluding EHAA for further development.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion or administrative recommendation? Jan, do we have a second please? Thank you, Kim. Comments, questions?
My digits, I want to comment. By reading through all of this, reading through all of this, somewhere in here it tells you about the way the school fundings and how everything's funded together and then distributed out of our offices and our new local policy, is that going to include these trips for these kids that are going on an outside source? And if not, why?
What policy?
Yeah, what's?
To tell you the truth, I mean, this is so long. I mean, this is 334 pages and it seems like old text of just overloading the boards. But, and I made that comment to Mr. Corr this afternoon that I was very surprised. The reading was on this, but there was one here.
CFD local.
Is it CFD? So you're saying that the booster clubs and everybody has to donate their money to this one funding, that there's going to be a board that's going to approve the distribution, but we have organizations that do self-planning and self-paying. I don't think they should be excluded from this policy then. And that would end up eliminating most of these out-of-town trips if you really look at this. Because it's an organization.
I wasn't aware that was that kind of change. It's really.
What, another word?
When I read it, it just sounds like they're rewording the exact.
What number is that, these guys? Because I can't find it.
It's CFD, it's at the beginning.
CFD, and it's just, when I read through it, it's not excluding.
Am I? You're talking about the one that talks about activity funds?
It's talking about the activity funds and it goes on to carry over funds through clubs.
Because like, the designation is, if it is, if it's a student organization that has officers, then the funds belong to the students and they have to have input into the decision. And it's just kind of reuniting that part. That's what this, because there's two. There's campus activity funds and there's student activity funds. And student activity funds are the ones that, that money can only be used for those groups and those students have an input into what those funds can be used for. So I guess you were saying an example of if one group was included, all of them need to be included, but I guess.
I don't understand that part. It looks to me like they're just telling people that they have to take care of these funds appropriately and be accountable for them.
Yes.
The principal or the sponsor.
Uh huh. The superintendent makes sure that there's rules and that the sponsors, everybody follows them.
For all student activity funds.
There is a section in here that I read the other night about how it was distributed through a board. And obviously, I don't want to sit here and reread all of this again. I did not write all that down. So it was.
It was actually, the funds come from the student activity funds and you maintain those funds in accordance with accounting processes, correct?
There was some verbiage about that, yes, there was that.
Yes, and that's what.
What I'm saying is because it included, the word "club" was added. I was taking the word "club", like we haven't newly funded booster club.
That has nothing to do with it, because that's an independent.
It's an independent organization.
Those fall under something different.
Yeah, that's a different. These are student clubs.
Like student council or, the newest one is, you know, we have the technology club. That's one of the newest ones. I will see that we're going to have an esports club here pretty soon. We've started the esports program, but once we, I envision we will have an esports club for the next few years. But this has nothing to do with booster club.
Yeah, that's an independent organization.
Yeah, they do not bank with us.
Yeah, they maintain.
And that's really where I wanted it to separate and that's why I was wanting to get that clarification because I felt that they need to have their own account. That we need to let them be self-sufficient.
Well, they are.
Yeah, so then I'll find it this way.
I think one of the dangers in, if you don't do the activity funds correctly, just for an example, I know this happened somewhere else. A school wanted to honor all the seniors by giving little yard signs. And that's pretty expensive to do. And these yard signs were going to be in front of the high school, every senior. They didn't have any money in the senior account. So they looked around till they found somebody else's activity account. And without contacting those students, said, well, Mr. Principal, this particular organization has money and we need over $1,000. Let's just take their money. And it was during the pandemic. People were insistent and there was no money, so they did it. And that was not right.
That was one thing to get away from because that was, there's been several instances, you probably read about them in the paper. It's happened over the years where different student activity funds were pilfered by either the organizers or, like you were saying, that one, it just happened to them. And that's one place to keep away from that. Okay, there is a motion and a second, correct? So we've had discussions. Is there any further discussion on it? All those in favor? There's a post-motion case, 7-0. We're going to the consent agenda discussion action items, which contain the check payment register, financials, budget amendment, tax collection report, and more than minutes of regular and special call board meetings.
Yes, John had some questions.
Did you find those, Patrick? I mean, Patrick, I'm sorry.
I can put a clarification, because Mr. Corr brought her notes. On page 17 of the check register, as I was you were referencing about the checks to Tulsa Midway Food Service.
And you have Tulsa Midway Food Service on page 19.
I'm sorry, 17, I'm sorry. What that is is.
But you have Airmark on page 11.
The difference between that is, that's how we keep track of. It is Airmark funds, but that's how we keep track of the catering that they do. Like, for instance, if you look, like, it says Pride of Texas. I'm going to say that, I can't tell you exactly what that was, but they probably got Airmark to do maybe the spread for the coaches' room or the room they have where the officials and coaches can go in there and eat. So you get a, we get a quote, Airmark will give the group a quote. And so then they go in and they do a PO and they pay for it. So that came, that probably came, I will tell you, that came under the Pride of Texas activity fund. Because all the costs of running the tournament, it's, all the entropies go into that, into that fund, all the costs, the officials, everything of running the tournament. And then when the money's left over, they split it out between the people that benefit from it. But it is, we do that kind of internally and the check is written to TMISD Food Service. Then we give that to Airmark and then Airmark turns around and we deposit it back and it goes in as catering revenue. It's just how we track the catering revenue. And then Airmark does, we have per our fixed meal contract that we have to Airmark, any catering that they do for the district, there's an equivalency factor based upon the dollar amount of the catering job. And that's how, that's how we reimburse Airmark through the checks that we write to Airmark, what they bill us every month. But this is just kind of an internal way of us keeping track of the catering. Because all of this, 100% of this catering is things that people here in the district do. Like, a lot of the schools, when they have their, if they have staff development meetings, whatever, they'll get quotes from Airmark about bringing refreshments for their meetings. Or I know last year, Carol, they did hamburgers for all the seniors one day. They do different stuff and Airmark provides that. So this is just our way of keeping track of the catering. So even though the check, the check gets written and then we turn around and we deposit it right back, we call it catering income. But since all our district, all our schools, it's just easier for them to do a requisition. Their budgets get charged, the cost of the catering. And then at the end of the month, Airmark bills us using the equivalency factor of what we owe them for the catering that they provided.
Does the Tulsa food, does that include the board meetings?
No, they do not bill us for, the food that they provide to the board meeting, Airmark does not bill us for that. That's. That's like, that's like something that they provide the district, that's like their service, they do not bill us for that. But everything else that other groups or organizations or campuses do, they are billed.
Okay, then, did she come up with the city water? I'm assuming that was city water at that price?
With the city, that's, the city is everything, it's wastewater, it's gas, it's water, it's, you know, it, it doesn't have, it doesn't have trash collection, because we have another company that we, that we contract our trash collection. But it's gas, and it varies to campuses, because we can't, different campuses have different, depending on their HVAC system, whether there are more gas or not, but it's gas, water, and wastewater is everything for the City of Corpus Christi.
Well, I asked Mr. Cora if she would get with you to figure out how much of this is field watering?
We'll work on this, and we can give you like a breakdown of our water bills, the history of our water bills.
Maybe on the fields, because we have, we have that terrible crown that needs to be fixed. Patrick's already giggling all their butt. But yeah, we need to get that field, that crown fixed, and I mean, we could look, wouldn't we measure that? And then I asked her about page, about the Toshiba was on two different pages as well, page eight and page 17. You had two different, but it's the exact same price. And those are your paper, I don't know what it is in this.
What was the other page, 17 and what was the other page?
Eight and 17 as well.
I can tell you, Toshiba is our district-wide printers and copiers.
Right, there was, there were seven, there were seven days apart at the same price. So this is like a weekly payment, or, one was like January the 14th, the other one was like January 21st?
Yeah, it's actually, just because of the billing, it's two separate months, because it's a lease purchase, so we have a flat amount, but it just sets the billing. The one on page eight is basically, basically the January payment, and the one on page 17 is basically the February payment. It's a monthly payment, but it just wound up getting paid. And I will tell you, that's 100% because we went, this is, we went live on the e-finance fund accounting system on January 1, so that's the only reason there's, there was two months back together, because we went live, and this was, January was the very first month that we used the new finance system. That's why if you see the check, the check register looks different, because this is the new check register and the new system. And there still is one, we still have a check register from Ascender, because we're still doing payroll until April the 1st, so that first, the first one is the, is the check, the only checks we write out of payroll.
Is that the one on page three, the computer solution?
No, it's just, it's just in front of this one.
Oh.
It's just, there's another check register that goes vertical, that goes regular, that's, that's the few checks that we're still writing to vendors and payroll. But you said page three.
Page three is computer solution, and Trish is here, maybe she can help us out with that.
No, that's more like, see, the E-Rate network, the E-Rate network upgrade, that's something to do with our network, and then that other one is, it's an even amount, so it's probably either licenses or something.
Hours.
Hours for support.
For hours. So like, when we just had this recent incident, we got engineers from them, they were there immediately, 8:00 in the morning.
That's what I wanted to know, is this to cover the incident we occurred? That's, those are the ones, I know, I know, I slipped that last one in there, I get my idea.
This wasn't part of that, this is just their regular, we have support to maintain our servers and our stuff, because this was to cover something that happened back in October, and the check was written in January, so this was before the latest event. But this is a regular, this is a regular expense of the technology department.
Oh, okay.
To maintain our network.
I had, to be honest with you, I thought ransomware was just something I saw on SCA, you know, Criminal Minds and stuff like that, so when, when I saw that bill, I said, man, that's expensive to find that guy, but.
We wish it stayed on TV.
I just have one on, on page six, only because I don't, I don't understand, I don't know what this would be for, but Nuasis County, it's $3,700, what do we do with Nuasis County?
That's our, we, as part of, we're a county of certain size, so we're required to have a, that's JJAP, that's the Juvenile Justice Center, and so all the districts in Nuasis County, Melody McLaren is our rep that represents us to the JJAP, and it's like an independent thing, so the districts, we have to support that, so generally, we always say we're going to, we have to buy, so we generally buy two chairs, two seats. So if we have a student that incurs an infraction, because there's laws that say certain types of transactions, you have to send your, you have to assign the kid to JJAP. So we have to pay Nuasis County, Juvenile, whatever the program is, we pay for two seats whether we use them or not, because that's how you.
It's like a pool.
It's like a pool, and then if we have a student, if we have our own student that does, does a violation that requires it, we have a seat for them to go to.
He's painful.
He's painful. And then, as the year goes on, districts, we sell and trade chairs, because maybe, maybe Flower Bluff had four seats, and they need a fifth seat, and if we're not using our one, we'll say, okay, you can use our, and so then we don't get, we get a little bit of money back, and we don't get billed, but we're committed to buy two chairs. Melody, like I said, Melody's our rep, and she goes to the meetings, and she's the one that works with them, but it's, it's a.
Good, I didn't have any idea.
It's a required, it's a required cost. If you look at the, if you look at the financials, the general fund financials, it's in a function by itself, it's not 91, I think it's 93. That's, there's a specific function just for juvenile justice, and that's, that's our cost. And like I said, we generally, we generally commit to two chairs a year. We'll tell you, there was one year that we needed three chairs for a brief period of time, so we had to purchase another chair, but as soon as the chair is vacant, then we're back to only paying for the two.
And this way it keeps the school going, so that there's no lag in having to hire teachers, it's already set up.
They have, they have to have so many chairs purchased for them to even run the program, guarantee that they'll have the staff, that if, when the kids from all the kids, from all the districts in Nuasis County, they have to send someone to JJP, they have to have the staff to cover it.
It's their budget.
Yeah.
You want to talk us through the budget amendment?
Yes, and Trish is here, we, we get so much E-Rate funding, and it's current, it's like a five-year cycle, and we've already used half of our E-Rate funding, we did it, used it over here at the middle school, that was the next school that was up for us to upgrade the infrastructure, and when I say that, it's the connectivity of the campus. And Trish can explain more, but it's like the wireless contact points, and there's some cabling, and there's other stuff to make sure that the school is, I'm just going to say it's connected, you know, so no matter where you are in the campus, if you've got a wireless device, you can connect to the network. So now it's the high school's turn. And Trish can elaborate, and it's pretty, explaining the, Trish provided me the data for the reason for the amendment, and so E-Rate always works on, you have to, you have to, E-Rate pays for a big chunk of the project, but you have to provide a local share. And we have, next up is the high school, it has the oldest infrastructure, and so we do have the funds now that we want to, we want to go in and replace everything, and it's going to replace all, all the connectivity of the building, so no matter where you are in the building, you can connect to the, you can connect to the, to the network on a wireless device. And it's a, it's a big project, but we feel better, it's better to just knock it all out in one, in one shot. And so we already have some money that's already in the technology budget to cover our local share of the E-Rate to get this next high school project done, we're asking for these, this additional funds that we need to get that process started. As soon as we do this, we can, we can start issuing the PO to get the project started. But it is a bottom line, because one thing, when I, when I did the budget, I did not budget for the indirect cost revenue that we're getting from the ESRA funds, and so that's where I'm, I'm actually putting in the budget, that's what, that's what's covering this, so it's not, the bottom line to the budget is zero. I've got, I've got revenue coming in that wasn't previously budgeted that we're going to dedicate to, to cover this project. And with, with, you know, we talk about, hopefully we're going to get back to normal, but we've, COVID has inadvertently and accidentally and thankfully kind of turned us into a one-to-one district, and so the connectivity is, is very important. We have to protect, we have to protect that network, and we have to protect everything, but when we're done, the building, the building will have complete new infrastructure, lots of wireless contact points, and I'm not even saying it right, because I'm not a technology person, but.
Access points.
Access points. So it will, it will, it will get the building 100% into the, you know, connectivity. So that's, that's that one. And then the other one is just a minor change at the middle school, they just need to move some money around to readdress some needs that they have.
Are you going to have access points in the parking lot?
I don't think so, no, it's just for the.
That's not in, that's not in this plan for E-Rate.
Because I mean, range that, when, during COVID, kids couldn't get internet, and they wanted to come to the school to get it, and they couldn't, because we had no internet in our school system outside.
No, that's not part of this plan, yeah, but, but we do need more wireless access points, because now we have so many devices, you know, one for every student, and we never had that before, so, a big project.
Very good.
Okay, everybody ready for the question?
Okay, that's the end of the questions. Do we have a motion and a second on that?
The administration's recommendation that the Board approve the consent agenda as presented.
A motion on that? Ben, Ben, John?
One second.
Any further questions? No further question, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. The Board will convene in a closed meeting as authorized by Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code 5514, possible. Several things on here. Discuss employment of certified, non-certified personnel, 551.074. Discuss contracts of administrators. Discuss employee resignations. Closed session, item requires action, the Board should take such action on re-convening open session, 551.102. The certified general process is maintained, 551.103, and items of personal disclosure are granted for loss. It is 10:28 PM, February 21st, 2022, we are in closed session. Thank you, Paul. Okay, it's 11:36 PM, February 21st, 2022, we are back in open session. Mr. Cora?
All right, it's recommended that the administrators on this sheet be issue the contracts that they're eligible for as presented above.
Thank you, Mr. Cora, I'll make that motion, do we have a second, please?
One second.
Okay, any other discussion? You got all those in favor? Those opposed? Six to one, carries.
John, did you, I didn't see your hand.
Yeah, it was Steven.
Steven.
Okay.
Okay, now we have the teacher.
Yes, I'm recommending to you market Zamora. For a probationary contract for the remainder of the 21-22 school year.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion or administrative recommendation, please? Ten, second, John? Comments, questions? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries, seven zero. Mr. Cora? Do we have, is there any further business?
That's it.
There's no further business. Don't forget March 7th, that's where we're supposed to meet with Tasby. Okay, there's no further business, the motion to adjourn? All those in favor, return. Take care, be careful, safe going home.